Okay, great. And it's being livestreamed.
All right, well, good evening. This is the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board on Tuesday, November 23rd. Welcome. Those who are on livestream, or we don't have anyone in the audience yet, but hopefully we will. So I want to just quickly review the agenda for this evening. We will have community input at 7:00, then an LEPC update, which I will give, since Chief Fisher has another commitment. Then we'll hear from the Governance Task Force. Rebecca Vieira is going to be with us. And at 7:30, we have the tax classification hearing. And then at 8 o'clock, we're continuing the dangerous dog hearing concerning Dexter owned by Joseph Topol at 81 Greystone Lane. 9 o'clock, we will get a final report on the cable, Community Cable Needs Assessment. 9:30, appointments and resignations. 9:35, the Town Administrators Report. 9:45, Liaison Reports. And then we'll end with the approval of the minutes and adjourn at 10:00 PM. So I'd like to begin the meeting by reading the following statement concerning the civil rights suit that's been filed. So on November 4th, 2021, 10 town residents and two non-residents filed a civil suit in federal court against the town of Carlisle and several town officials, including the Carlisle Health Agent, the Carlisle Board of Health, the Director of the Gleason Public Library, and the Carlisle Town Administrator. The suit is challenging local face mask mandates adopted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The plaintiffs, those who filed the suit, have every right to do so. In response, the town tendered the suit to its insurance carrier, MIIA, Property and Casualty Group, which in turn assigned the law firm of Pierce, Davis &amp; Perrotto, LLP, as its defense counsel. Pending the outcome of the suit, there will be no further public comment regarding this case. The Select Board wishes to extend our thanks and appreciation to the dedicated volunteers of the Carlisle Board of Health and the Board of Trustees of Gleason Library, our health agent, and the Director of the Gleason Public Library for their hard work and diligent efforts in protecting the health and safety of all Carlisle residents and employees. Thank you. All right, from that, we're going to go to the LEPC report. And we had eight new cases of COVID in the two weeks that ended last Friday. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had 267 total cases, of which 21 are probable. The mask mandate will continue to be in effect and will be reviewed again by the Board of Health at their meeting on December 15th. Two very successful vaccination clinics for children were held in Concord recently. 1,400 children were vaccinated. We don't know how many of them were Carlisle versus Concord, but it was a great turnout. And the staff that were running the clinics did an excellent job, Linda Fantasia reported, and it all went really smoothly. The follow-up shots will be offered on two additional clinics, one on December 1st and December 8th, for the second doses of the vaccine. And anyone is eligible to attend those clinics. And obviously, children must have a parent or a guardian with them. The Carlisle Public School continues to do pool testing. They're waiting on guidance from the Department of Education, the possible relaxation of some of the safety protocols that may be able to be put in place in January. They're waiting for word on that. And finally, the Council on Aging and the Neighborhood Relief Fund continue to support Carlisle seniors and others in need here in Carlisle, providing Thanksgiving meals, gift cards for food, and mental support, mental and emotional support. That concludes the LEPC report. So I don't know if Rebecca is on. It's 7:07, and we're expecting Rebecca Vieira, the Chair of the Governance Task Force, to join us. Let's see. Who would know if somebody is waiting to enter the meeting?
Show up.
Tim, are you on the?
No.
Has he turned over the host function to anyone else?
I don't have it.
Well, we had talked about him doing that with David. Can you tell if there's anybody waiting? Right.
I wonder if we can call him.
Jen, will you, yeah, check in, thanks? And just see if we need to let people.
He can, he can give the responsibility if somebody's on.
Right. But he thought he was going to be able to stay on the call.
Let me get on the Zoom. Are you on the Zoom right yet?
I didn't get on the Zoom.
You didn't?
I can do that.
Were you? Okay.
I'll do that.
All right, otherwise, I can, I'll do it. I hate doing it on this. I've got a lot of notes.
Yeah, he was on at the beginning of that.
Well, it's 7:09.
Well, as people request to enter the meeting, though, he's the one that. Right.
So there might be people in the waiting room.
Yeah, exactly. But he was going to, that's why we discussed him turning that over.
Host has locked the meeting. It's still locked, actually. He needs to unlock it.
Okay. Do you want to give him a quick call? I'm just going to call from RJ. I have a feeling people are having a hard time getting in.
Yeah.
They're not getting in because it's locked.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Jen. Maybe she just stopped the recording for the moment. Oh, he does that too, okay. 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 Yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah. First time for us, too. Okay.
Okay, so there might be a lot of people locked out right now. So Rebecca and RJ just said that they're locked out. Please let us in. So I said, we're working on it. Sorry, we're having technical problems.
Okay.
Not that goodness, it's not the dog's night. It's not funny. Actually.
Oh, I see. Well, that's a scary. Well, we can't communicate with anybody that's waiting to get in.
No, we can't, right.
Well.
I mean, he may have locked it because of the executive session.
Yeah.
Locked it when we asked him to. And then maybe he got called away for his dad, and then he forgot, or he whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's the case, he just thought that it's. Wasn't it showing that it's locked, for the phone? I don't know. I'm just saying, when I try to get in.
Let me see if I can. Maybe he likes me better.
Not like worse than.
I don't even have. Host will let you in soon.
No, host will let you in soon. So maybe, maybe it's happening. Okay. Farther than I got.
Huh, well. Jeez.
When somebody moved, somebody was on that screen because it came up. It's opening.
Oh, good.
Good, okay.
Great. All right, great.
Should I take over for?
Would you turn off, turn off your, turn off your.
Turn off my.
Okay. Got it, okay. And I'll just say, we apologize.
Yeah, so. Okay. Well, for those of you joining us via livestream here, via Zoom, our apologies. We had some technical difficulty, but it now seems that everyone that wants to get into the meeting has been able to do so. So I will just say that we've, I'll come back now to the opportunity, if anyone would like to offer community input. Could you indicate by using the chat to indicate you'd like to say something, or?
Raise, or go to the reaction button and raise your hand. Use the raise your hand button.
You can see who's on, okay. And you can see who's raising their hand.
Yes, I can.
Yeah, so please either raise your hand or go to the chat button and indicate you'd like to make a comment. All right, well, hearing none, I think I will proceed. And I gave the LEPC update, which I'm not going to repeat, but I'm going to go right on to the Governance Task Force update. I believe Rebecca Vieira, are you on the call? Yes, hi.
Hi, I made it.
Yes, welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. And is there anybody else from the Governance Task Force on the call? Did I see that RJ?
No, he just emailed me to say he was locked out. I don't know.
Yeah, I think he was trying to join to listen in, but I don't know that he's made it.
Okay. Oh, wait, and I see something from Stacy. What does she say? Oh, sorry.
Hi, all, I would like to know if the Select Board plans to. Hi, all, I would like to know if the Select Board plans to answer the questions I posed in my recent letter. Thanks.
No, we're not, we're not planning to address that tonight, Stacy. Okay. Let's go ahead then, Rebecca, if you would share with us, yeah, where things are with the Governance Task Force. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me today. I'm going to share some slides. There are just a couple to kind of keep us on track, but I think Tim said that would work, although I don't know how to share it in presentation form. So I think that is, is that coming through for you?
Yes, it is, thanks. And we also, we also got copies of it in our packet as well.
Great. The only change is like an updated date, and I was off by one survey result, so.
Okay, great.
The, so anyway, so thank you again for hearing what we're doing and giving us a little bit of time tonight. We have started since August. We've been kind of moving right along, and our group is on his, the list of the folks that are on our group. It's me, Vanessa Maroney, Paul and Agnes Stopless, James Bone, Brian Cruz, Kyle Delbeck, and RJ Matthew. I'm going to stumble on Kyle's name. That wasn't the one I would have expected. So general functional information of what we have been up to. We've been, it's a lot of work, as you may well know. And it's a short, a very short timeframe, I think, for the amount of work, especially as we look back over previous task force. I think they took a couple of years to complete, so we are trying to stay on track and do this in a consolidated and efficient manner. So we are meeting typically Monday mornings for one hour and Thursday mornings for two hours. We are publishing all of our documents and information that we are working on in a publicly accessible SharePoint file, which is located on the town website. So if you drill down in our, where the Governance Task Force is listed in the town committees, you can link over to the SharePoint site that is available for everyone. So they can see every document we discuss at our meetings live as we're doing it. They can go in and poke through all of our kind of background and research documents. And so you are welcome to poke around there. We will go over just a couple of them. I'll show you where we're at a little bit later, and you can access them there afterwards as well. We have hosted a survey that I think everyone's aware of, and Vanessa is fronting that, and it's reimbursed to her at $105 a month. I think that's currently our only expense. We probably will look for some administrative expenses a little bit later as we, you know, need photocopies or booklets printed or something like that as we get closer to a town meeting. We have had several publications in the mosquito, City in the Woods, Facebook, other social media kind of sites. Like there's a Facebook Parents Group, and there's one other group that has been published. And then on the town website, though, we are trying, you know, to get the word out there and keep people involved. And we think that we have kind of gotten people involved. So just for background, we developed kind of a loose understanding of how we were going to work through this process by doing data gathering. So that's surveys and some kind of general overview interviews. Then we're going to synthesize that data, come up with some topics, prioritize our selection of those topics, and then do these targeted deep, in-depth interviews, and then develop our recommendations. The survey, we feel really impressed with. We got 429 responses, which we thought was a really good response rate for us. It is in line with other towns, getting, they got, you know, somewhere around 10% of the town population. So we're a little under that, but it was around that, so we're close. We've also completed six data gathering interviews. These are with town employees. We had one non-response, so we will, we will keep that as its own kind of information point. We are also working on doing seven additional data gathering interviews. I actually probably will be reaching out later on tonight, since it's on my mind, to set up something with you, Barney. We will then, our future will be complete survey and interview analysis. So we are simultaneously, while we're doing these overview, or these data gathering interviews, we are, have the survey data compiled, all the answers are in an Excel spreadsheet with pivot tables. And, you know, it's, it's pretty robust in terms of the information contained there. We are coming up with those common themes that we are, and we've actually kind of gotten through that a little bit. And then develop our in-depth interview questions. We will schedule and conduct those in-depth interviews. And the point of those interviews is to use the kind of survey results, those topics that we got from there, which we kind of think could be an indicator from, because we have both town resident perspectives and employee and appointed and elected official perspectives. We think that we can use that as kind of like the, where there are symptoms, and then kind of drill down from there and get folks with some in-depth knowledge of the town function to provide their input as to what some solutions could be, or why they think those symptoms are happening, and what, let us dig into that a little further. We will then formulate our recommendations, draft, and submit our report in time for town meeting. So that is basically kind of the, where we're at and where we've gone through, where we think we're going. We have kept it a little, a little loose. We, our goal was really to make sure that the data was driving the questions and topics that we were digging into, and that it wasn't our individual kind of experiences or biases about the town. And I'm pretty new here, so I wasn't necessarily one of the folks that would have had a lot of that. But we, I think as a group, really wanted to make sure that when we come with the recommendations, that we have it, the data behind us, so that those are objective things that we're bringing to you, or to town meeting. So with that, I'm going to stop that share, and I am going to go over to, so you can get a sense of the, a sense of the SharePoint. I can do this. Okay, so right now, I hope that you can see basically what is our Task Force document folder on SharePoint. Again, this is available for anyone. We have our agenda, our minutes, and videos of all of our meetings posted here. We have our interview notes in this folder. We've got research from outside of Carlisle. We took some task force or similar organizing committee information from other similar towns, like Sherborne was the one that we looked at quite a bit. We researched within Carlisle, the previous task force report that is, that was done in around 2000. And then we have our supporting documents for meetings. So this is actually, so these are our upcoming meetings we have for discussion. These supporting documents actually are organized by meeting. So if you have our agenda or our minutes, you can go in and you can review those, what we've done there. Back, so, and we have our survey results. This is where the full survey, like the bulk dumped out of Survey Monkey, or actually, some of these are, were mailed in and picked up. And so I think this one here, the top one, oh, I'm sorry, no, this data all final is the complete 400, and I think that one's 424 or something, and then these are the additional ones, two, three, four, five, a few more, so 422 or something. Anyway, so survey results, if you're interested in poking around there. So here, I wanted to show the project management spreadsheet. This is kind of keeps us on track, meeting to meeting. So it gives all of the items that have been assigned, if they're to individuals or to their, or they're all of us, the different tasks in between meetings that we're trying to accomplish. And so this is, this is a, again, we do it meeting by meeting, so we don't know what our next task will be from our next meeting. We will create it and type it here, and then keep track that it actually gets done. It could be something that's done within a week. It could be something that is done, you know, in three weeks. So we just keep that here. So just wanted to show you that piece. And hold on, back to. Then we have a Gantt chart here, and I've had a little trouble scrolling through. But the Gantt chart, if you download it, I think you would be able to see our projected timelines that get us to have recommendations done by, I believe, we're looking for around March 7th. And so we are aiming for that. I think it would be, I know, I don't think we have a town meeting date established yet, but I think that was the date that we needed to have it done. If it was on the earlier side, we would say we would love to have an extra month. So if, we would like to know as soon as possible if we have that extra month, I think, if there was any way that we were going to figure out when town meeting was going to happen sooner rather than later, so that we can make sure that our schedule is happening the way it should. So I think this one, in order to make this scrolling work, you would have to download onto your PC to look at it. So anyway, so I did want to just share those with you, that they're available, so that you can see where we are anytime. You can see where we are, where we're going, what our plan is, and how we think that we can get there. Those in-depth interviews are going to be tough. They're going to start over the holidays time, when I think people are probably going to be in and out. So I think we have those scheduled to go into, well into January. And then we should be able to get right into our recommendations after that. So I'm going to stop sharing. I'm going to answer any questions you might have.
And just a quick response on the town meeting date. That's on the next Select Board agenda. So in two weeks, we should have set the date.
Okay. I think the other thing that we, we would ask, I heard this at the group, I was, you know, kind of tasked with asking, was that as, as there are considerations that are ongoing about any kind of personnel or more structural changes, that it might be helpful for us, I mean, you know, we breed them in the mosquito or in minutes or whatever, but it might be helpful for us to hear that so that we can make sure that we are taking that into consideration as we make the recommendations. So if any of those are imminent, I think there is an ask that be shared kind of more directly.
Okay. Yeah, I'll answer questions from the board.
So thank you, Rebecca. A lot of good information. David Modell here. So you talked a lot about the process.
Yep.
But not any idea about sort of, is there any preliminary, I mean, we gave, you know, we, I should say, we gave a broad charter, and I think Wayne gave you a pretty broad, you know, canvas to work on. But you have sort of clusters of things or give us some sense of direction? Because one of the things here is if, you know, if we think that maybe a little mid-course correction in terms of where you're taking it, that would be something we would talk about.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to our website and share one more time, so that you can see our focus areas that we have right now, and what we are currently working on. And on Monday, we will have this a little bit cleaned up and a little more polished, I guess. So you'll see in this section, we have the focus areas based on the survey results. And in this, we have culture, treatment of citizens and employees. And so in the results, the survey results, these were the themes that came up. And so because there were a large number of responses like this, it's something that when we go now to our in-depth interviews, we might have questions. And again, I'm kind of presupposing here because we're not this far, so don't hold me to like this exact question. But we might come to the elected appointed officials and the folks who we have identified as kind of knowing a lot about the town governance, and say, we had quite a few responses in the survey that, that were suggesting that we needed to address diversity and inclusion. Do you have any idea what we could do to address that? Do you have any suggestions? And the suggestions that we might receive might fall into some of these other categories, and so we know there will be a crossover. So in our governance, structure, and organization piece, we heard a lot of HR, I clicked on the wrong one, HR and staffing resources as being an issue. So we might hear that again if we're talking about diversity and inclusion. We might hear that there might be a resource in this area that is thought to be important or helpful in addressing that issue. So I think we have culture. We have the structure and organization around kind of the operations from a personnel standpoint, the operational professionals, again, or process, sorry. So we have about, things about services and communication, town meeting structure, and then financial planning and management, strategy and management. And so this is kind of a long term. Is there something structurally speaking that we need to address there? Infrastructure, so IT, we got quite a few IT, and then we had some affordable housing, or lack thereof. And then policies and bylaws that might be. And then policies and bylaws that might be some difficulties for residents or even for folks that are, you know, in positions trying to administer these, these bylaws or policies. So this is kind of the general where we are right now. Again, this is pretty new. These are this kind of out of the survey results. And this is the, these are the topics that we will take with us into those in-depth interviews to get I think the substantive input for how these should be, these issues could or should be addressed. It doesn't mean that we will make recommendations to address all of them because, you know, we might find that some of them are just either not appropriate because they're not at that kind of higher structural organizational letter or level. They might be something where we, we have talked about in the recommendation report that we could have kind of some more informational sections that just say, while we thought this was not able to be addressed based on what we've been asked to do, these are things that the town maybe should be aware of because there was a significant amount of feedback around these areas. So these are all things we've kind of tossed around a little bit, nothing in stone because we're not there yet, but I think, I hope that addresses your question.
Yeah, thank you. I guess, I mean, I'm somewhat concerned about the timetable. The, the range of town meeting is what, what, what range is?
Well, it's typically in April. You know, last year it was later because of COVID and we wanted to do it outside, but this year I think we're, are assuming, we are assuming we'll be able to go back indoors. So normally it would be what, somewhere around the third week of April? And then you'd have the town elections.
I would, I would say there's normally a closing date for acceptance of warrant articles. But I would say if they didn't have financial implications, I think we could extend the that closing, you know, we could have like a general placeholder for governance articles. On our warrant.
Okay, getting back to process then is, is it your understanding Rebecca that you'll make? You, I think Wayne was pretty clear that you report the town meeting not to us. So you make recommendations at town meeting, but do they result then in warrant articles or is that for the next cycle?
No, they, they, they have to bring warrant articles in order to present them at the town meeting. If there are things, because.
Right, Rebecca, is that what your understanding is that you, yeah, yeah, you would, you would be bringing to town meeting warrant art, a warrant article or more based on your report. Yeah.
Yeah. And so that we would need to have it completed and, and whatever. So I didn't, I don't know about the, how would the warrant article be different than the recommendations? But the, I know that our goal for recommendations was that March 7th date. And so I had confirmed that with Wayne. So hopefully that's still real.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and typically, you know, the sort of drop dead date for information being included in the warrant book. You know, it's typically two weeks before the actual town meeting, just in terms of getting the warrant book printed and mailed out to people. So anyway, we'll know that.
So I guess where I'm going with this then is, you know, if I look at your slide number, I guess, the future, right? Conduct interviews, organizational, okay, blah, blah, blah. Then, you know, survey, that's great. And then interview analysis themes, you're doing all that stuff. And then ends with draft and submit report, which for, you know, almost every other task force we've ever done, maybe every task force we've ever done, that is accurate, right? They submit a report, it would come to say us or some other body. We would deliberate and then we would decide on that. So actually, your future ends too early because you're not drafting and submitting a report. I guess you've got to actually go the next step and work with council. And I guess Wayne to develop warrant articles and then your court of opinion is the town meeting. It's very different for us. I mean, because there's not another body. There is a deliberative bodies, the town, but there's not a board, a deliberative board. The normal sequence is the, the task force reports to one of the boards. Let's say it's us. We then are another layer with presumably, you know, enough experience to figure out what would work and wouldn't work in a warrant article. And then we would ask maybe the task force to present that case to the warrant and there would be a discussion at town meeting. We're eliminating that step. So that's okay. It's an interesting experiment in my view, but it doesn't put a lot more pressure on your team to not just look at that line and say draft and submit report. That's like February. You need a month. You're going to have to figure out because, and I don't want to, I don't want to be negative. I think it's a good process of learning with council and town manager and maybe we're involved, maybe we're not. I'm not clear on whether we have any involvement to get that warrant article. It's not, we're not, let me say one more thing. Now, Neil, Wayne didn't want us to be like a veto authority. And we won't be a veto authority, but, but I think the step that's missing is there's no sort of, the town official needs to be in that process to make it work. And I don't know how, what the mechanics of that are.
I will circle with Wayne and make sure that he confirms the dates that are on the Gantt chart. We start our drafting, so we may be able to pull that in. We have start, like the, the timeline for starting the drafting is January 2nd. Or no, oh, is it January 2nd? It's, I'm sorry, that's the form when we start that. Be drafting. It's assigned segments and start the drafting. So we do have that actually January 3rd as the assignment date. So we can, we expect that even before, so there's like quite a bit of narrative in these reports. And so even before we have the recommendations, we need to do some of the narrative and we expect that most of that will be done kind of earlier on and we will be down to really the recommendations for that final, you know, couple, week or two. So I think I will just confirm with Wayne on if I need to pull that into even earlier than March 7th to accommodate the, the, the warrant piece. Or if that was thinking that we were going to have another week or two after that. But that's the best answer I can give you right now.
And I'm, I'm also just thinking, I, I don't remember exactly the wording of the, of what was approved at town meeting in terms of setting up the government's task force, but if, if it became clear that there were some things you were ready to recommend that, and, and had specific, you know, proposals that you wanted presented at town meeting to be discussed and voted on, why you couldn't do it in phases. Now, now you as a committee might not want to continue your responsibilities past town meeting, but I mean, I think that wouldn't be an unreasonable way to go if it turns out there's just a whole lot that, you know, you're trying to figure out. The other thing I was going to say is that, you know, as with a lot of boards, you know, there are any number of boards that develop their own warrant articles and, and use, you know, town, our town council to make sure they have the wording right. So I don't see why the government task force wouldn't be able to do the same thing in terms of, you know, developing the specific wording that you, that would be appropriate for town meeting. We should, we have four more minutes before we want to conclude here, but Luke, yeah.
Wayne's pretty good at drafting articles too.
Yeah, right.
Well, you'll be fine. You're in good hands. Yeah. And then run it by council.
And, and I just wanted to add that, I mean, it's important that you guys do the drafting and not us. I mean, I'm just thinking if there were some sort of a, you know, if they decided that not everybody should be, you know, we shouldn't have so many elected boards. That absolutely cannot come from us. That has to come from somewhere else. And, and we don't, I think if you do decide, we don't want to wait six years for it. I think there's enough. Right now, we're having some turnover. Yeah, we've had one unfortunate death. We've had a retirement. Things I think are changing faster than we were expecting in, in terms of staffing and in certain respects, I think it's vital that we do, we do get your work completed on this timeline. I know it's very short and it's going to be difficult, but I think we, we have, we'll have a lot of positions to fill. And that won't be able to wait another year and that we should be doing those in accordance with a new governance plan and not do it according to the old governance plan because that's kind of productive.
But I think what Kate's saying, Rebecca, and I agree with it, is if you have to prioritize from your big laundry list, in our view, and it's only our view because you're independent of us, the HR personnel structure side of town is an important one. That's what launched the task force in the beginning. We had many conversations the year prior circling around how the town is structured and how it operates. And that's, I guess from our view, maybe I'm speaking for myself. I don't want to speak for the whole board, but you know, that's a priority that we would like to see as compared, there's all the things on your list and they bubble up are important, but that's the one I think that we.
And I did do some poking around and I did look at your survey and at a lot of the written answers, I wasn't able, I, I looked. And they do conform a lot with some of the conclusions that we came up, that we had come to and why you guys are in existence to begin with. So I'd say that as well.
Yeah, thank you for the work that you've already done.
And the access to the work is.
I had just one other thought to throw out there, which is, you know, sometimes a, a committee task force board will have something they're putting on the warrant for a discussion and, and a vote. And before that, they'll hold a hearing. And I think you might want to think about that so that, you know, particularly if you have a lot of information and a number of recommendations about changes to our governance to provide an opportunity for people to dig into that in advance of the meeting, you know, might be really helpful.
Great. I actually like that.
All right. Well, thanks so much, Rebecca, and to you and the rest of the task force. Thanks for the update and we'll, we'll all, I think I'm looking forward to taking a look at all the information you've got on your website too. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you for having us and, and your, and your input and I'm sure you will be hearing from various members shortly, if not already. And, and in these in-depth interviews especially. So we'll be looking for your, your input there.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Oh, tax classification. Okay, the lines were done by eight.
Hello, hello. How are you doing? Welcome back. Thank you for your patience. So would, we've got a motion here that maybe you'd like to make a short presentation, kind of an introduction to the. Okay, great.
I'll, I'll read the motion. You want me to read it before you start? Okay. So I, I move for the purpose of setting the fiscal 2022 property tax rate that the board approve a residential factor of one, thereby establishing a uniform tax rate with no differences between commercial and residential property tax rates. And that the board not grant an open space discount, not adopt a residential exemption and not to adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2022. Further, we acknowledge that the Board of Assessors has informed the Select Board that the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 2022 will be $3,177,942.97.
So Chair, would you like to come up to the microphone then people that are live streaming or can hear you as well? Thank you. And just introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Ken Mustello. I am the Chair of the Carlisle Board of Assessors and also with me tonight representing us is Teresa Kevaskouskas, who is also on the Board of Assessors. Thank you. So yes, the, for the purpose of this motion really is to enable the, the Select Board to establish the tax rate for the new fiscal year. In order to do that, we really have to pull together all of the figures necessary to conform to Proposition 2 and 1/2, which limits property tax increases, as you know, to 2 and 1/2 percent. Those figures have been gathered by the assessors with the assistance of an outside firm we use and also with the assistance of Kimberly Kane, Town Accountant. Those have been submitted to the Department of Revenue. So we are in, we've met all the requirements for you to set the tax rate at this time. As far as the specifics of the motion here, historically, we, you know, the, the state does permit us to set different tax rates for commercial and residential property. We have no history of doing that in Carlisle. And I, my own personal opinion is it's counterproductive to do so for the simple reason that we have very little in the way of commercial property, which means that doing so wouldn't really move the needle as far as your tax revenue much. And secondly, it would probably appear to be rather discriminatory since only a handful of taxpayers would be affected by that. So that is usually the, the question that, that comes up when, when you establish the rates. The excess levy capacity really represents the additional taxes that in theory could be levied if we were to go, but that's, you know, I did independently verify the calculation on that number. It is, appears to be correct. That's Kim, Kim's calculation, but it looks, looks to be correct to me. And if there are any, unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Thank you for your work.
Yes, yeah. I, I know there was more to do this time around. And we also, I just want to say for the record, our thanks to Kimberly Kane, the Finance Director, and to Kelly Byer, our Town Accountant, because I know they work closely with the board. I'm going to, yeah, just sorry because they, they won't be able to.
They won't be, it won't be public if you don't.
No, I, I want to, I want this in the public record. We have gotten a tremendous amount of support from the employees of the town, from the other boards in the town. This was a really difficult situation with Melissa passing away right before we had to go through this submission process with the Department of Revenue. We also got a tremendous amount of assistance from the DOR as well. Their people were excellent. And, and without all that help, I don't know if we would have been able to pull this off. So I just wanted to just, I wanted to just give them some recognition for what they did.
Good.
Thank you.
And you too.
Yes, yes.
So we have a motion on the floor and was it?
I just wanted to say something about the excess levy capacity, which is really, I'm happy to have. And I'm, what it means is that, you know, if we were to bond something, for instance, we would not necessarily have to go for an override to pay for it because we have capacity to put that in the taxes. And that's a really important thing. I mean, to have. You don't, yeah, you don't. And we, it helps us keep our taxes at a sustainable level at all times. So.
All right. Any other comments? Did we get a second to your motion, Kate?
Well, I, I did say second because technically we're supposed to second before. I, I did. Before we start the discussion.
So the motion was made and seconded and.
Let's pick up there, Luke.
All right. So if there's no more discussion, let's take, you know, we do, we can do a voice vote. Yeah. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you again for your work and for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for your work and for both of you coming.
Thank you very much to the town, thank you. All right. Thanks a lot. Have a good holiday.
My God, we're back on schedule.
Okay, well, now we have.
We don't have a.
Eight minutes, actually.
How are we going to do the Town Administrator's Report tonight?
Well, there are a couple motions in it.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about, yeah.
Why don't we drop down to the Town Administrator's Report? A couple of things we can just, we can just read aloud. More announcements, but there are.
Down an award, but the major thing is the MIPC Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yeah, and there's another one, too.
And I have.
So hold on, yeah, so the report about the, right, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, do you have something to share on that one?
Yes.
Kate, okay.
I have something to read, a certificate of adoption. So I move that we approve the certificate of adoption, the Select Board of Town of Carlisle, Massachusetts, a resolution adopting the Town of Carlisle Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update, whereas the Town of Carlisle established a committee to prepare the Town of Carlisle Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update, and whereas the Town of Carlisle Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update contains several potential future projects to mitigate impacts from natural hazards in the Town of Carlisle, and whereas duly noticed public meetings were held by the Carlisle Planning Board on February 9, 2021, and June 16, 2021, and whereas the Town of Carlisle authorizes responsible departments and/or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan, now therefore the Town of Carlisle adopts the Town of Carlisle Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update in accordance with Mass General Law's 40, Section 4, and the Charter and Bylaws of the Town of Carlisle.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
That was hard to read. But I, having actually attended those, you know, outreach sessions and knowing the work that the MIPC does, I am wholeheartedly, you know, supportive of adoption of this Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Yes, and it may be very, this may be provide some food for the ARPA committee.
Yes, it might, because water, yes, water is part of the deal.
Also, I know the Planning Board, you know, put a lot of time.
They did.
Sort of driving this process, so we appreciate their work on this, too. All right, well, if there's no more discussion, I will take a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
That's not a roll call, that's okay.
I mean, sorry, a voice vote, whatever. Yeah, anybody opposed? All right.
So Jen, do you know who signs this? Is this Barney that signs it?
And then there's the intermunicipal agreement with Westford, Ray, the telecommunications tower at 1110 Westford Street. So there's a proposed intermunicipal agreement with Westford to locate telecommunications equipment on our tower at 1110 Westford Street. Thanks to Deputy Fire Chief Matt Sfatek for his assistance with the Westford Fire Department. Unless there are any changes, a motion to approve this would be in order. And is that actually in the packet? Okay. That's what I'm asking, the motion.
That's an easy motion to make, somebody else could do that.
Let's see. Yeah, do you want to make the, you want to make the motion then, David, please? Oh, here it is, yeah, it's down on.
Page nine of 18. Okay, I moved that the board.
Long whereas.
Adopt the following intermunicipal agreement between the town, I'm going to take my mask off for this, the Town of Carlisle and the Town of Westford.
Maybe you could say as written.
Oh, good, yes.
Because it's two and a half pages, two pages.
I won't, but the first whereas is misspelled, so could we get that fixed?
Yeah. All right, so go back and make your motion again if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I move that we adopt the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Carlisle and the Town of Westward as presented in the packet.
You have a second? Any discussion? Is there what?
A date on the.
It gets dated when it's signed.
It gets signed at the bottom, yeah. All right, well, hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
That's a weird looking word. I kept on looking at it.
Oh, what, the whereas?
The whereas, yeah.
All right, well, that brings us two minutes before the dog hearing, so maybe we should.
What else do we have on his, did we have anything else? Award of the Letter, Sustainable Materials Grant. Okay. Town has gotten another award for $750 for sustainable materials from DEP, which Gary can use at the transfer station for signage promotional materials. We've done the mitigation intermunicipal agreement. Oh, let me talk about ARPA, I will talk about the ARPA committee process later.
Well, you've got one minute, so why don't we just, we'll just wait, okay?
Yeah, no, I have, I need more than one minute, right, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's why I was saying.
Good evening, good evening. Come on in, everybody.
And then the last thing was the employee holiday party.
Come have a seat and we're gonna, we've got just a minute before the hearing is scheduled to begin. By the way, Luke and David and Barney, do you have the holiday party on your calendars?
December 9 at 12:00 PM for the.
Is that the Great Wall time, yeah?
Oh, yeah, I'll be here, sure.
All right, let me get to the right spot then.
Number five.
And do we know, there's Mr. Cohen and I see Ms. Merrill, and do we know if Justin Neal is.
I've admitted him.
Okay, great, great. Let me just get back to the beginning here. Okay. Well, all right, I need, I don't need a motion because this is a continuation of the dog hearing that we began two weeks ago. And just remind everyone that this is the continuation of the hearing for the purposes of determining whether the dog named Dexter of 81 Greystone Lane, Carlisle, Mass is a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog, and in either case to determine the appropriate remedial action to be taken, if any. So just as a reminder, we, at our, two weeks ago, we heard testimony from Mr. Beal, the complainant, and also from our Carlisle Animal Control Officer, Mr. Delano, and we agreed to continue the hearing till tonight because of the miscommunications about the timing. And so tonight is an opportunity for further testimony. I just want to make sure that Mr. Cohen, you and the TOPLES had a chant, we made available to you the recording of the testimony received the last time, and we also made available to you a copy of Mr. Neal's statement, and I just want to confirm that you've received those and that if we're, if you're fine with that, then I would like to open up the hearing for additional testimony.
I have a quick question about, oh, the, some people, sorry, this is probably for Jenny, but last time we had our hearing, people were sworn in to give their testimony under oath of, do we need to renew that or remind people or do it again or what do we do there?
Well, Mr. Cohen is an attorney, doesn't, isn't sworn in, but yeah, the TOPLES, if any of the TOPLES want to make, come up and add testimony, which you're very welcome to do, then we'll, I'll swear you in first. And similarly, if there's anybody on the Zoom call that wants to offer testimony, we'll do the same thing for them. So with that, Mr. Cohen, are you, are you ready to offer your comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And to answer the question you posed earlier, yes, we received everything. Thank you so much. We had ample opportunity to review it.
All right, good.
All right, and again, thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight. Here's, here's how I'd like to see tonight go. This, and this comes after watching not only our prior hearing, but the hearings that y'all had in September and October. I, I feel tonight could be a collaboration. I think that we can solve this problem so that everybody walks away feeling safe and secure, that they were heard, and that the likelihood of something happening again is minimal. At the same time, the results, I think, need to reflect the type of bites these were to the dogs. And so my, what concerns me is, is the label of danger. So my approach here is that I want to educate the board to the extent I can, because you're relatively new to dog hearings, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but nuisance is a viable option here. And I know that is falling on ears to say, what are you talking about? But I'm going to explain it. At the last hearing that I watched, I noticed that for the October hearing, for the prior dog, there was about, actually, there was a seven-minute segment of trying to determine, of weighing whether the dog in question there with three to four human attacks was nuisance or not. And that's healthy, that's fine, but I also noticed in the last deliberation that you had in our case, before we came in, you spent about three seconds on nuisance, and when it came to dangerous, it appeared to the board that dangerous is so obvious that to be a no-brainer that there was giggling going on, like, do we even have to talk about it? But I think we do, and here's why. I think the board has broader powers under a nuisance label than a dangerous label. And I've really appreciated the analysis you've done in both hearings about this law, which is not an easy law to navigate. I'm an attorney who knows one thing, and it's this law. That's, that's all I do. Under nuisance, well, you saw the restrictions you have under a dangerous label. You have to fit into one of these six categories, and number seven is euthanasia, and clearly that's not on the table here, and it wasn't on the table for the other dog. But what you found the flaws in 140, 157, if you deem a dog dangerous, because you can either humanely restrain, there's no reference to offense and there's no reference to training. And I think here, those are two important things. The fencing under nuisance order, the, what nuisance says is that the board can select any remedy that will ameliorate the cause of the situation. And that's been interpreted by courts to be very, very broad, unlike if you deem a dog dangerous, the limitations. So I just want to make the board aware of a trend and of these cases where nuisance is actually a more viable option. I can tell you that I am on a working group to change the law, to adjust it, and this is one of the problems with the law. But it is the law that we have to deal with right now. So as you've seen in the definition, a nuisance dog is a dog that has attacked an animal, a domestic animal or person, but such attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all of the circumstances. I don't know why the dog bit. I have my theories, Mr. Neal has his. But what we do know was there was no human target. Mr. Neal, in the first incident in July of 2020, said that he was there and that Dexter charged past him and went after his dog. The bite to Mr. Neal's hand was a result of him trying to separate the dogs. So yes, he was bitten by Dexter, but he was not the intended target of Dexter, and that's a distinction that the courts make, because a dog is human aggressive, is not usually a dog that's dog aggressive, usually one or the other. And you have a real monster when you, when the dog is both. We don't have that here. The second, in both instances, in the second attack, too, the second attack, Mr. Neal wasn't bitten, so clearly he was, he's not a target. And in both instances, Mr. Neal, he was able to, in the first instance, drag Dexter up a long driveway to his house and manage his two dogs, and he didn't get bit, and the other dogs didn't get bit. In the second incident, which was witnessed by my client's son, who I believe is here tonight, Mr. Neal was, as he already testified, he's a strong guy, and we could see that, he, he was pummeling Dexter. I mean, he overpowered him and he was punching him and kicking him. Yet Dexter didn't respond the way you would think a dangerous dog would. He didn't attack him. And I think those are important distinctions here. Of course, the owners here are responsible, you know, the TOPLES, they take total accountability for what happened, and that's why they're here tonight, and that's why they're not going to get kicked out tonight, because they respect the process and they respect the rules that you've put in place. And we can already see that through the ACOs, the restraint order he put in, and then he renewed it, and now it still exists because we pushed the hearing out. There's been no violation of the restraint order. The clients have shown a respect for what this town is trying to do to keep everybody safe and at the same time allow them to keep their dog. As, what I want to speak to more is what the definition says is not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all of the circumstances. So I want to make sure that by the end of tonight, you've heard all the circumstances. And this is accepting what Mr. Neal has had to say. He was the only person there in the first incident, and again, for the most part, in the second incident, he was the only person there. I'm not here to challenge him about what happened, whose fault, we know the gist of it, dog escaped yard, bit other dog, and he got bit, too. And it happened twice. But what we know is after the first incident, here's what we know, we have a nuisance dog in a dangerous fence, okay? After the first incident, Mr. Topol addresses the fact that his dog got out. In fact, he was only using an e-collar. That was his fence. Now, that's not, that, they should be taken off the market if they're going to be used for just that, to keep the public safe as the only barrier. But no pet owner knows that right away. So after the first incident, he put up a fence. It's a chain link fence, I've seen the fence, I've submitted pictures of the fence, and his yard is unique, there's some ledge in some areas, so the fence had a sort of vinyl tarfish-type bottom to it. Dexter had never escaped. There's been no other incidents with any other dogs in the neighborhood, and up to 30 dogs walk by there a day still. In fact, Mr. Neal was able to walk past it four to five times a day for, for two years, and there were two incidents, two too many, but there were only two incidents. But what Mr. Topol did the first time is he put in this fence, a year goes by, the dog doesn't get out. But then Dexter gets out for the August incident, when, where the fence comes to the ledge in the corner of the yard, actually, I'm sorry, he got out because he was able to go through this vinyl bottom of the fence. And so what Mr. Topol did after that and since that, and one of the reasons there's been no other incidents, is he went out and got rebar, rebar at three-foot length, and he's put them into the ground through the chain link fence, so they're in the ground more than two feet. Statue requires at least two feet if you're going to have a fence, and they're every foot and a half. So Dexter, who's not a digger and not a leaper, he's never jumped over the fence, he's never dug under the fence, he cannot get out. And we would invite anybody to come and see this fence, including Mr. Neal, without his dog, if he wants to see that, that these holes have been plugged, but it's a unique backyard. Additionally, in the pictures, you'll see there's tree logs. And those are, that's for the area where there's, there's ledge, where you can't drive rebar into the ground. So he's, he, he and his family carried these logs that have gone down around their house to secure the bottom of the fence, so Dexter can't try to squeeze under. And he'll do anything he has to do to this fence to make it work. This time, I think we've captured everything. In addition, Mr. Topol does have one more thing he's doing to the fence, and that's to put in these, these bars at the bottom so that the, the bottom of the fence is also weighted down. And that's very difficult to penetrate. At the same time, and I heard talk about a pen at the last hearing you had, at the same time, he's using the e-collar to keep the dog within a fenced-in area within the fence. So the dog, Dexter has his e-collar on, and the fence is activated. In this fence, there's a 20-foot barrier between the e-fence and the, and the fortress fence. So that's a backup. But now, if a dog comes by, Dexter can't even go up to the fence because of the e-collar. And he continues to get trained on the e-collar. We know what happened the first time. The e-collar, the battery wasn't working. And there's supposed to be a beep that warns you. Anyway, they, they replaced the, the whole mechanism. Mistake happened. The, so there's the fencing portion. This, also Dexter is not outside without the supervision of an adult. Mr. Topol's office, and I've been to the house and his kitchen, look right into the yard, into the fenced-in area and the e-fenced area. Dexter's always being watched, so he's never let out there alone. But now he would have to break through the electric fence, break through the regular fence. And I, I think that's difficult to do. And we didn't have this kind of security for the first incident, and certainly not for the second incident, but he got closer to it. That whole thing that I just went through, you can't order it if, if you deem the dog dangerous. He, he wouldn't be compelled to have that. So he also did this voluntarily, which I think speaks to the, the fact that you can trust these owners. The other thing he's been doing, in, in addition to working on the e-collar, Dexter needs to, he needs to have better recall. He needs to be trained that when he hears his name and he hears a command, he stops in place. He does that command. And all dog owners, your dog, eventually, some of the training wears off. So what he's done is he's contracted with a trainer in Concord, Mass., who's going to do a two-week day train. That means Dexter goes in the morning, comes home at night. And this trainer knows what's happened. He knows what he has to work on with Dexter. And that requires homework. And having met the TOPLES and some of their kids, this incident, they're, they take it super serious. They are doing their homework, they will do their homework. Again, I don't think the training stops after two weeks. Training of a dog should be ongoing, doesn't have to be every day, but it needs to be refreshed. Again, that's something they, they're doing voluntarily, and, and the board cannot compel or order under a dangerous order. The last thing is, there's a, there's been discussion about insurance and some confusion about that. Again, this is a difficult law to understand. It's, has a lot of vague, vagueness to it. And what the insurance is about is simply to make sure if this dog were to get out again, is there coverage? Is there personal injury coverage in case something happened? So Mr. Topol has informed me, he does have coverage for that. He has specifically for the dogs are covered under his policy, Dexter, that if somebody were to get bit, or if a dog were to get bit bad enough that it, it required significant payout, he has that in place. So it's basically, it's the homeowner's insurance that does not exclude having a dog covered for any type of loss. There's also this other type of dog bite liability insurance you could get. But he, he has an umbrella policy, it's significant coverage. Which, under nuisance, just like under dangerous, you, you could order or compel. Dexter is neutered, so that's sort of a moot point under either dangerous or nuisance. After, after getting a chance to not only read Mr. Neal's presentation, but watch it and watch the board's discussion, I, these are two completely different dogs, two completely different cases from what you dealt with in October and now. In October, my opinion is that the board didn't go far enough, and those owners should be absolutely thrilled that they got that result. In most cities and towns, I can tell you, I've, I've, I've been to 110 of them, that dog would be euthanized. So the, the analysis that this board did is healthy, it was proper. But I feel that without our input, your deliberation at the, at the end of the first hearing and ours, I think it was one through three, five and six, it was actually, it may have been even a little bit more than was ordered for the dog in the October hearing. This is a different incident, this dog's not human aggressive. We, we'd actually, we'll get, after the first incident in July, the, the folks who, Mr. Topol and his family adopted Dexter from, came down to evaluate Dexter. What, what, what suddenly happened? Is something wrong with his behavior as he changed? And also, they had a behaviors come out. And both people, especially the people knew Dexter before, said, no, nothing's changed. He's, he's the same dog, like, does he have an injury? Or did something about the, the transfer from New York to Massachusetts affect the dog? They didn't think it did. And we're happy to get another behavioral evaluation, somebody who looks at everything, all the incidents, without my input. And just says, here's what we think happened. But Dexter, in Dexter's mind, those incidents, Dexter was provoked, okay? None of us know how Dexter was provoked. We, what we do know is there's hundreds of ways that dogs can sense things that we have no idea even goes on, okay? It can be sense, it can be, you know, the smell of a dog, the smell of people. It can be a voice, it can be what you're wearing. We don't know what was going through Dexter's mind, but we know that he didn't set out to bite a person or to kill another animal. Dexter's, none of these were, were kill bites. In fact, in the first incident, there was a minimal vet bill of, I think, about $100. We haven't heard any testimony about the vet bills, but it doesn't dispute the fact that something happened. But the point is, he, these weren't highly aggressive kill bites, which some dogs could administer. So, and then after hearing from Mr. Neal, I, I appreciate that he's not looking to euthanize the dog. He wants to feel comfortable and safe. I really think that the fence does that with the training, and I think it can all be accomplished under a nuisance label. So why do we care if it's nuisance or dangerous on our side? Because whatever you do, we'll follow this dog throughout the state and throughout its life. And if you deem this dog dangerous, it cannot go to training. A dangerous dog can't be boarded and can't go to training sessions where there's other dogs. So that's a problem. A dangerous dog cannot be insured. Insurance companies will not insure a dog who's been deemed dangerous. So I feel that, that under all of the circumstances and everything we've seen, that while there were bites, they were not the type that even kept an animal in the hospital overnight. And I've seen plenty that keep them in for weeks or months. We see Mr. Topol right away paid Mr. Neal's, his out-of-pocket medical bill from the first incident. These are engaged people in the community. They, they want people to feel comfortable walking by. They were friends with Mr. Neal. And as Mr. Neal said, bringing this forward probably hurts the friendship. But, but still, he's, he and everybody else should feel safe to walk by. And I can tell you, other than Mr. Neal not walking by, people are walking by the house. If they weren't, you would have, at this hearing, you would have a roomful of people and a Zoom full of people saying, you need to kill this dog. So I just want to focus on the fact that, you know, using the frequency here, there are two bites to one dog. It's one, there's one common denominator here. And I think that for Dexter, for the board, for the, for the facts here, to use that one frequency and extrapolate it to all dogs and all people that Dexter's a danger to throughout the state for the rest of its life, I just, I don't see how that connection could be made. And I just don't see how a judge would make that connection if, if this were to go further. No one wants it to go further. So I, I'm, I'm asking, and we'll present some testimony, so you have it on record, that, that you consider deeming Dexter a nuisance dog with the, with an order containing the three things that I suggested. I also want to point out one last thing. Whether you deem the dog a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog, it carries the same weight. So you have 140, 157. And I know one of you looked at 157A. I believe the chair, chairperson did last, at the, at the last hearing in October. 157A just says non-compliance of a dog owner with an order. It doesn't matter if it was a nuisance order or a dangerous order. The stakes are just as high. You can seize the dog, you could euthanize the dog. There's penalties, there can be criminal penalties. So the board doesn't lose any power or authority or control or any future power by deeming Dexter a nuisance and not a dangerous dog. And finally, and I promise that's finally, there were a lot of, a lot of speculation, well, what if it was kids? What if it, my wife's dog, what if, what if our law in this country, in our law, the dog law doesn't? It can't punish future acts. It can remedy prior acts. So we're admitting, taking accountability for the prior acts. But we, we can't, we can't just sit here and think about every what-if, or none of us would, would have a dog. So thank you for that uninterrupted opportunity. And unless there's any questions, I'll have Mr. Topol testify about the, the sequence of events that led him to how his fence has evolved into a fortress.
Anybody have anything specific there? Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Topol, please come on up to the microphone. And I'll need to swear you in, please. So yeah, raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye. Joseph Topol.
Please solemnly swear.
Oreming swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
The testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth.
The truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And then please introduce yourself and where you live.
Joseph Topol, I live at 81 Grace St. Lane in Carlisle. I've been here for 17 years.
Thank you.
Joe, you heard, you heard everything I, I had to say. And it's after several, several discussions with you and your family. Can you walk the board now? But what I had to say is in testimony, can you provide for them, in, in your own words, the, the sequence of your evolution of your fence in the e-fence, please?
Yeah, I can. So the first incident, Dexter was on an e-fence for a year, never breached it. We have two dogs, neither one ever breached it. One day, he got out, and the incident happened with Justin. Justin brought him back, cleaned him up. From that point forward, we never let him out in the e-fence again. I contracted a fence contractor, he put a fence in, it's a chain link. I don't know a lot about chain links, but apparently, if you don't tie it down on the bottom very tight, it's just a fabric. Dog figured out after a year that, hey, I can push it with my nose and go under it. And he did, second incident, actually, I think it was the day before. He was out, I got him right back, it was no problem. Next day, he, my son was watching him. And he just, for whatever reason, he knew there was a place he could get under the fence. And he did. And I had actually fixed the area where I thought he went under, because I could see it was disturbed, with rebar, some rebar. After the second time, I went around, checked all the fence of my Max. We found loose areas, bought rebar, secured it. And there was one area by, we have some ledge where drops were. You see the logs that were put there to prevent him from pushing it out. So he doesn't go up there anymore because he wears the e-collar now. So he stays far away from me, he's afraid of the e-collar, gets to the edge of the dirt. I know because I've seen some deer run through the woods, some fox, even coyote. He won't even go anywhere near the fence, and we supervise him. So he's not getting out. He never tried to jump over it, he's never tried to dig under it. I don't, you know, I can't answer, you know, how we found the area, but he did find that one area to get out. So there's one last thing. I looked into these fences a little bit further, and there's actually a bottom rail you can buy that you can mount on the bottom of it and secure the bottom of the fence to it. So there's maybe an inch between the bottom rail and the ground. And that's the last thing I'm going to do. So there won't be anything coming in, there won't be anything going out. That's, that's what I have to draw for you today. We got him.
Can you tell them, Joe, why you hadn't done the last piece?
Excuse me?
Can, can you tell them why you haven't done that last piece with the bottom rail? Because of the fence company?
Fence contractors, I, I just can't seem to get one. I've had a guy, I had a guy, I had a guy out last week. Use, use, his pricing was really high. It was $8,000 to put a bottom rail on, so it's only about 300 feet of it. So the material, you can't, I can't get all of it. You can only buy it in piecemeal right now. So I'm trying to get enough of it to at least do the areas that are, that you could, you can kind of see where the ledge is. The problem with the ledge is you can't put the rebound ledge without drilling into all the core. So once I get that, once those are in, right now, we do have some, some barriers there. I mean, I couldn't even get out of it. It's, we piled it up with ledge and some logs. So it's hard to get the material, but I expect probably by springtime, it'll all be done, the whole entire bottom of the fence. And again, we leave him on the, the e-collar as well.
Joe, can you, now, can you just? Because again, what I said about the insurance and the training is information, but it's not testimony. Can you talk about the insurance and then about the training you're going to get?
Yeah, so I have an umbrella liability policy, and they do cover animals, dogs after that age. So we, we have an umbrella, had it for forever. So it's liability insurance.
And it's not breed-specific?
No, it's not breed, not breed-specific.
It doesn't exclude any breeds?
Does not, no, they do not, they do not exclude any breeds.
Okay. And then how about the training?
Training, so not quite sure why this happened. I can tell you that we've had no issues whatsoever with him in the two and a half years we've owned him. And we walk him twice a day, both of them. No issues, we pass people, we pass all the dogs, nothing, zero. No, no issues at all. So I'm not quite sure what caused this. I read up on it a little bit, and like Jeremy said, it can be smell, it could be anything, they're animals. So I did contact a dog trainer in Concord. And they have a day, we bring him for the day, and they kind of work on him. If he sees things that might attract his attention, they work on him, so he doesn't get overstimulated by seeing it. And I'm working on, I'm getting him there by force of the year.
And then lastly, in terms of, after that training, if that trainer says, look, here's things you and your family need to work on and, and/or go for additional training even somewhere else, is that something y'all are willing to do?
Yeah, we, we've had training. So I, I do have an understanding of animals and how they behave, because when you go to train, they do tell you, hey, they're animals, they, they can react certain ways. You know, and we, we, when we walk them, we have them on a leash, you know, a strong leash, it's a love leash. We don't use any of the retractable ones, so he's safe. Like I said, we have zero issues walking them. We have, we pass people in our neighborhood every day. We take them to Wal, then we take them to Petco, they get groomed, no issues. So I, I, you know, the training will probably be good. It's always good, training, it's a lot of work, you know, we, we do put a lot of time into it. But you, you just don't know until, I guess, like this happens, that, you know, you have to work on a specific area a little bit harder. That's what we stand right now.
I have a quick question, Roy, on your fence. Is there a gate in the fence?
There's two gates, but I haven't locked them. I haven't bungee caught it. So they can't, because, you know, you never know, right? If they push on them, it's just a fence with a latch, so. They do, they, we do have two, they're both latched, they're both secured, so you can't open the latch, like, so someone couldn't come in there and just leave it open.
Yeah.
And I also have a bungee caught around it, just so he can't force it. Not that he has, I've never seen him do it, but just in case, just for safety.
Would you put locks on?
Excuse me?
Would, would you put an actual lock on the gate of community?
Yeah, I haven't put padlocks on it yet, but what I do have is a nylon tie on it, so that, that you can't, unless you really, really force it, you're not breaking the tie. The lock is fine, so I've been.
And so when you let, let Dexter outside into the fenced-in area or bring him back into the house, are you always doing that from some kind of door that goes from the yard into the house as opposed to using the gates?
Correct.
Yeah.
Back door goes right to the deck, the deck goes right to the yard, the yard is fenced. So he never gets past that. And then, like I said, whenever we walk him, it's always on leashes, both of them. And there's been zero issues walking them.
Yeah, okay.
Right away, we take them.
Any other questions from anyone here on the specific test tomorrow? No? Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Would anyone else from the Topol family like to come up and say something?
I, after talking to them today, I, everybody always wants to say something, right? But I, I feel like we just, we, we gave you everything that, that the, we gave you all the information that we'd like for you to know. Of course, you can ask questions of anything, but I think we can, I don't think we have to go to midnight on this one.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the Zoom call that wanted to offer testimony tonight? Or Mr. Delano also? Yeah. Mr. Neil, is there anything that you, any additional testimony you want to offer tonight? I should probably swear you in too, if you'd like to say something.
I think I was sworn in last time. Does it not carry over?
That, that carries over. Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I would just like to say a couple of things. The fir-, the first thing I, I want to say is that, you know, I really feel that Joe and Maura acted extremely appropriately off the first attack. And I would never say anything, anything other than that. I don't want to cause any further issues between Joe, Maura and my family. And I know that it's, you know, this, this has the, you know, the chance of really being a disruptive and unpleasant event to go through. I think Mr. Cohen has made some extremely well-made and very cogent points. And I think that Joe and Maura have taken great steps in securing property as well. And I think that that's highly commendable on their part. I don't, I, I, I wanted to just say, I never hit, punched or kicked the dog. And, you know, that's not, that's not the way that I managed to force it off. I actually grabbed its collar, which is how I got bitten in the first place. And I tightened the collar around its neck to try and get it to release and pull it off. So that's a, that's a little different. However, I, I don't want to go down this road. So if with the remedies that Joe and Maura have put in place and the board feels that a nuisance finding is appropriate, I think that my, I think that my family and I would be happy with that. So I, I agree with Mr. Cohen. I think we can come to a, I think we, from my perspective, I think we can come to a mutually acceptable answer here. And I think it would be better for our neighborhood if we went down that road.
All right. Thank you. So if there's no additional testimony that anyone would like to offer, I'm going to close this part of the hearing and then we will begin our deliberations. All right, so you can have a seat. And so I, we have, you know, the, the testimony that we heard two weeks ago and then we have the testimony we've heard tonight. We have some pictures from the Topol family of the fencing that they have at their house. And I think we sort of have, have we identified the sort of relevant testimony and documents that we have received. So with that, I will close the hearing. And I'd like a motion to do so.
I move to close the hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now it's our time to deliberate. And as we've heard, there are two options for us in terms of how we might categorize Dexter. And I'm wondering, I think we've heard, you know, very clear statements and testimony about a case for describing Dexter as a nuisance dog. Does anybody want to comment on whether, maybe should we go through the nuisance dog definition? Or do people feel ready to decide whether or not we want to categorize Dexter as a nuisance dog? And if then if we say no, we're not going to designate him as a nuisance dog, then we would go on to the dangerous dog designation? Does that sound right? Okay. No, we've had it.
And, and Mr. Cohen was for it too.
We all got an education.
We have it. Yeah, we have it in our packet, the information about a nuisance dog. Let me ask Jenny Merrill is our town council. Do you have any comment you want to make as we begin this deliberation?
No, I mean, I think you guys are, are doing fine if you, if you feel you want to, do you want me to review the definition of a nuisance dog?
I mean, I. I don't think so. I think we've.
Yeah.
We've learned that pretty well over the course of the last several select board meetings.
I'd like to make one comment before we start to Mr. Cohen's initial comment, which was accurate, that we spent a long time deliberating the nuisance versus dangerous the first time and no time the second time. The reason we spent a long time the first time was because we didn't really understand the statute. We had to educate ourselves. So I'm not going to make a comment at the now time, but that was why we took a long time the first time. It was, I would agree, and we reached that conclusion. I think it was obvious to us after we learned it that that dog is a dangerous dog. I'm not commenting, you know, this one now, we're talking about this. That's the reason.
Thank you. While you did owe me an explanation, I appreciate.
Sorry, Mr. Cohen, we're, yeah, we've, we've, we're just getting into our deliberations here. But if we do have a question for anybody, we will, we will ask it. So anybody want to make a comment or ready to make a motion?
No, I, I just, you know, I, I actually agree with Mr. Cohen. You know, it, it's a completely different situation than the first dog. You know, and it's actually, it's, it's nice that you guys all came. Oh, sorry. It's nice that you guys actually all came this time. Because we got a, you know, kind of a more full picture of exactly what you've done. You know, I think the additional steps, I, I, I think that says a lot, you know? I mean, just look at the, the owner for, for a second, right? You know, you're remorseful with what happened. You, you were trying to implement things that, you know, will prevent this from happening again. You're doing the training, you're, I mean, no yelling, you know? So, yeah, I, you know, I mean, I, I actually, if you want me to say, I, I, I agree with the nuisance labeling. And I actually, I think it was important to point out because I, I didn't really understand this is that, yeah, it, it does hold the same, you know, kind of. We, yeah, exactly. That we, you know, that, that, you know, we can do something if this does happen again. I mean, I honestly, it doesn't seem to me like this will be anything, but.
I, I agree and I appreciate Mr. Cohen's presentation. I wish we'd had these cases reversed. We would have been a lot smarter. But yeah, definition of an expert is somebody who's already made that mistake. So I think this is a nuisance dog. I know I have it in my neighborhood. I have this dog, lovely dog. And I know from somebody else who walks around our neighborhood that she attacks that, that dog. She doesn't attack my dog. I walk back, back and forth several times. And so I know it, dogs are all crazy. So.
Maybe the dog's just afraid of you.
That's possible. That's possible. But anyway, yeah, and I, and I, I also appreciate that you've basically double fenced and that you are, you know, trying to secure that perimeter. And, you know, even though the dog's twenty feet away from the perimeter even because. But the day that the, you know, it, the day that the battery dies, you, you never know until it died and they've, they've gone past it. So that's, I think you guys have shown us a very good faith.
Yes, I'd also like to echo, first of all, I do appreciate Mr. Cohen's analysis because I had not appreciated that you have that option and that quite, that your remedies are broader. So it is a very poorly written statute. I'm glad, I hope you're successful in your endeavors to reform it. And I am a personal proponent of training. My dogs are trained. I was running them a few weeks ago. The battery ran out. I wasn't aware of it and the e-collar, but they're trained, they listen to me. So training is good. And I, I was disappointed that the remedies for dangerous did not include training because I believed that that is a good remedy. The thing that carries, and I echo everyone's comments that the Topols have been very responsive and responsible. The thing that carries the most weight with me actually is Mr. Neil's most recent reply.
Yeah.
And he also supports that because he is essentially the victim. And if he supports it, then certainly I support the nuisance dog.
And, and the one thing I'd add is that I, just as the chair of this meeting and the previous hearings, I really appreciate the tone of tonight's conversation and the effort to, you know, recognize or accept responsibility for what happened and also to work cooperatively to come up with a solution that works for everyone. And I appreciate Mr. Neil's statement as well. So I think I would also support designating Dexter as a nuisance. So it sounds like we're in agreement and that we should go ahead and someone should make a motion to that effect.
Do we need to specify any remedies?
Well, that comes next.
Okay. All right. So I, I move that we specify Dexter as a nuisance dog.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. So the remedies then, I mean, some of them, the Topols, you have already identified. So maybe we'll just specify though that the, the maintenance of the fence and the e-collar perimeter inside that, the, the training that you've discussed and I guess maintenance of the insurance policy that you already have in effect. Is there anything else that we want to include?
I can't think of anything.
All right, so though, I guess we have to take a vote on those three remedies. So I'd like a motion to that effect, please.
Waiting for me? Okay. I, I move that, yes, I'll move. How about that?
Okay. And second?
Then I guess I'll second.
All right. So Luke seconded. Any more discussion? Jenny, Ms., Ms. Merrill, do we need to say anything? Are we clear enough in what we've described as the remedies?
Yep. Yeah, I got it.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right, so let's take a roll, I mean, a voice vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. So what will happen from here is that Ms. Merrill will write up the results of the hearing and then we'll, I'll sign, it'll come to us, I'll sign it and then it'll be given to you, a copy to you and a copy to Mr. Neil. And we're glad that we've worked out a, a solution satisfactory to everybody.
Yeah. And sorry for the mix-up two weeks ago.
Yeah. 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 All right.
Thank you, everybody, so much. And I also need to say, thank you, Mr. Goddard, because he, he, he owned what may have been a mistake or typo and he got me everything I needed. So thanks, thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Merrill. Good night.
Question, do you want me to stay for the cable hearing? Or for the cable presentation?
I don't think you need to stay, Ms. Merrill, because this is just a final presentation from Ms. Fusk, right?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. We're not voting on anything. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Okay. All right. Roll your shoulders. We're actually a little bit of.
That's good, that's good, that's good. Let's go.
All right. And I see that you're on the call already, so that's great.
No, big slide deck.
So we have in our packet your presentation. I don't know that you need to, well, we, you know, because we've had some discussion with you already. But who, what are you thinking? That you want to just briefly give us an overview of the, of the summary? See if we can do that in fifteen minutes?
Well, don't rush it, right?
Okay.
I mean, it's an important presentation in certain respects.
I mean, if you think you need more time, we actually picked up a little time. So let's, let's get started and we'll see how it goes. Do you want to put your presentation up on the screen?
Yes, that would be advisable. Uh huh. Let me, let me get it up here for you.
Okay, welcome and thanks for being here.
I am pleased to be here. Well, what I'm going to do this evening and I'm going to try to do it, it seems like a lot of slides. My apologies. I will try to go quickly and I will sort of skip over a few things because I think they may be a little bit redundant to things we've talked about before. But what I want to do is number one, give you a framework for the license renewal process that the town is in the middle of right now. This is a process that's guided by federal and state law. There's certain steps one needs to go through in order to comply with federal and the state law. And also it's really important to understand that even though there are things we would like to be able to do as local governments with regard to these cable franchise agreements, we're not permitted to do them by law. And that is things like we can't control the rates. And you're going to learn from the needs assessment process that people aren't happy with their cable rates, but we can't control those rates. Okay? So you're going to hear things in this presentation that came from the public that we can do something about. And you're going to hear some things that came from the public that we can't do anything about. And I want to be real clear on that because I didn't want to shortchange any of the public input that came in. But I'll focus on the things where we have the ability to make changes in, in the future. As you all probably know, the current license agreement was granted in 2011. It was a ten-year license agreement. And as you all know, a whole lot has changed since 2011 with regard to how we, how we use media services, how we use cable services. And the cable isn't just about cable anymore. The same things that travel on the wire, i.e. what we traditionally call cable services, that same wire also delivers our internet and also can deliver telephone service. Part of the license renewal process you need to understand is this is about the wire and it's about the cable service that travels on that wire. But there are certain things that you can do that deal with the cable service that also will impact the other services. And I'll get into that in a minute. So very quickly, the process under federal laws, three years, it requires a performance review of the cable operator. It requires a public input process called the Community Needs Assessment Process. And out the end of those two activities, you will find, you'll identify things that you would like to make changes to in the current license agreement and be prepared to have a license agreement that can suit the needs of the town of Carlisle till 2032. Because franchise agreements or license agreements, as they're called in Massachusetts, are actually agreements that last ten years. So we can, we cannot be too specific on the one hand or too broad on the other when we look at what we're trying to do with a license renewal process. It typically includes negotiations and if you can't reach agreement through negotiations, you then move into what we call a formal process. And that process is really a process that I'm never even going to get into tonight, but it is a process, a procedure that is laid out under federal law. So here are some basic Carlisle cable facts to anchor what we're doing in license renewal. I mentioned the ten-year agreement. Comcast has a, has as of their last report to the state, to the Department of, the DTC, Department of Telecommunications and Cable, they have thirteen hundred and fifty-four subscribers in Carlisle. Based on recent town data, there are about eighteen hundred and seventy-six housing units in Carlisle. So the total, but what we don't know is the total number of homes passed by Comcast. We know the total possibility of possible homes passed, eighteen hundred and seventy-six. We know that there are thirteen hundred and fifty-four subscribers, okay? But what we don't know are the number of homes that are not passed. And the reason I bring this up is because it's something that has come up through the public input process. And we'll be starting to work through that, looking at maps. In fact, we've gotten some already from Comcast to determine what areas in the town do not have the opportunity to subscribe to cable. And I'll get into that in a little bit more, but I wanted you to know these facts. Now, another interesting statistic.
So, so before you leave that fact, I don't understand the math. If, if there's eighteen seventy-six housing units and thirteen fifty-four subscribers, aren't there something like five hundred that either declined cable or will pass? It can't be.
No, because there may be people who have the opportunity to take cable but choose not to.
No, but the math is that assuming generally one subscriber per household, only 500 homes aren't subscribers. So if.
No, no, it it I'm maybe I'm not articulating it clearly enough. Not everybody whose home is passed by cable subscribe to cable.
Well, when you mean passed, does that mean that a line goes near their house?
Yes, that's it. So we know for a fact, based on public input, that there are people who.
How many choose not?
Yeah. So there's a certain. Yeah.
Don't aren't able to choose.
Yeah. So there's people who choose not to that are part of that 876, 1,876. Okay. And there are some people who don't have the option to because the wire doesn't go by their house.
And are you and you do you have a number of, do you know the number of people that don't have the option yet?
We are in the, that will be one of the things will be work, will be determined during our negotiation process.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I know this is a little confusing, but but that's why I brought this up because I because people have come to us during the public process and said, we would like to subscribe to cable, but we don't because we can't because the wire doesn't go by our house. Okay. So that's why I want I wanted to make a point of making sure this is all very clear. Okay. Now, the current license agreement, that 10, 11-year-old license agreement. And oh, by the way, the, as I mentioned, you can see in the screen, the the.
Excuse me a second, Sue, but you haven't haven't actually shared the.
Oh, I forgive me. I'm sorry. I thought I had it up. Just a second.
We're looking at it on our laptop, but.
Okay, let me back up here for just a second. Let's get back in here for a moment. Let's find share screen. Let's go here. Well, I thank you for pointing that out because I thought I had already done it. And now do you see it?
It's starting, but hang on. It's not up yet. There you go.
Okay. All right. That's much better. Okay. All right. I mean, it's good. Stop me if something is unclear like you have been doing because part of what I'm, what I want to be able to do is make sure you guys have a clear understanding of what we've learned, what the processes, et cetera. And if you can't see the darn screen, the powerpoint. So in any case, the license agreement that's now technically been extended for six months by the DTC. Okay, it expired, it officially expired in October of 2021, but we've gotten a six-month extension from the DTC. Okay. And if we need another one, we can get one. Okay. So just so you know that piece. The current license agreement, which is negotiated, was issued in 2011, but probably negotiated over a year or so period of time prior to that, includes certain things that are to the benefit of the community. Now, when we're dealing with the franchise renewal process, we're our license renewal process, we're dealing with the fact that the cable operator is putting their wire on the public's property. You all are the landlords for the public's property. And when you have a landlord-tenant relationship, that tenant has to pay rent. So part of what we negotiate in the license renewal process is what is the rent for the use of the public right of way. And what I'll be focusing on here for a few moments is what that rent is. Okay. Under the current license agreement, which is 10, 11 years old. Okay. Now, there are certain, there are, there is a limited number of things under law that we can we can do to collect the rent. Okay. That we can require channels for community purposes. They're called public education and government access channels. Your current license agreement has three of those channels, which, by the way, have ended up being shared with Concord, even though your license agreement doesn't say they're to be shared. The next, and I'll go to the next slide then. A second here. There is this one-time grant that was given at the beginning of the license period of $90,000 for equipment and 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 so forth to support the community's use of those community channels. There is an annual funding amount, which is equivalent to any, under your license agreement, 4.8% of the gross cable TV revenue that can be used to fund staff and resources to make sure that these community channels are effectively used. Those are the things that are in your current license agreement now. Okay. There's also things like the ability to originate programming live from Town Hall, as you're doing now, and so that it can be cable cast in the cable system. And in today's world, so it can also be be delivered via via other platforms like YouTube, your website, et cetera. And there's a studio facility and equipment that is located at the Carlisle Concord Regional High School. They, that organization, under the umbrella of Minuteman Media, is responsible, per an intermunicipal agreement with Concord, to run those channels. Okay. So when we're looking at what and what's in place right now, these are the sorts of things that are in your current license agreement. And we'll get, and as we move through here, we'll take a look at what people would like to see in the future. And we'll also take a little bit of a look at what's actually in place in those facilities. Now, I wanted to give you the screen just so you have a little bit better sense of the value of the license to Comcast. Okay. So I rounded it from 1,354 to 1,400 subscribers times $125 a month per subscriber, times 12 months, times 10 years. That equals $21 million. But that doesn't count the internet revenue because we can't count that when we're collecting our 4.8%. And that doesn't include rate increases, and it doesn't include telephone revenue. So when you're looking at the value of financial value from a revenue perspective of the license agreement with the town of Carlisle, Comcast can anticipate generating about three times more than that 21,000 when you add in rate increases, internet revenue, and telephone revenue. So now we're up to about $63 million of revenue that the company will have the benefit of generating, okay, by using the public's property, okay, to have their wire in the right of way. So this is a real important factor when you look at the financial value of this license agreement to the cable operator as we begin to negotiate, the value that should come back in some way, shape, or form to the community for them being able to use the public right of way. So the needs assessment process, which I mentioned earlier, is a very important part of determining what to negotiate for. And in particular, in the category of rent for the use of the right of way. Okay. And I'm going to go through and list the eight different things. We just didn't do one thing to get gather public input. We did quite a number of them, and that's very, very important to to creating a strong negotiating position. There were two Zoom focus group meetings. Unfortunately, we couldn't do them in person in normal, in the normal times, we would have. But we still had 31 people participate in those two meetings. And that's about 15 people per meeting, and that's a nice number for a focus group. Okay. There was an online survey. It was open about 45 days. There was about 120 completed surveys. Yet again, a good number for a small community like a town like like Carlisle. We asked people on the online survey if they could, if they were willing to tell us if they're affiliated with any community group or school or department or whatever. And we had actually 21 different community groups, departments, schools, businesses that were listed as people volunteered. And some people didn't say anything, didn't answer the question, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of sense of that. We got input from the select board and the public back on January 5th. There was a public hearing at Town Hall on September 14th. In addition, there was another activity that was undertaken to get public input was to go over and take a look at what's at the Carlisle Concord Regional High School at at the what's equipment there that's used to broadcast the chat, the meetings and the programming on the channel, taking a look what the programming is that's being developed right now. There were also several Zoom meetings and in person and one in-person meeting with interested members of the community. Again, to gather input, to have a well-rounded foundation for what one might move forward with in in the negotiations. And all of that information then has come together into the needs assessment report. I wanted to point out that for some of you may have noticed that needs assessment report says draft on the front, and that's purposeful. Okay. Because we want to keep the record open as we go through the negotiating process so that if things change, we we can use those facts and that information to input the negotiation process that will be coming forthcoming after we have our executive session in a couple of weeks. So here are some of the key findings from the online survey with regard to this process. About 72%, so about 72% of the of the 1,800 of the folks who can subscribe to cable do subscribe. Okay. The national average is 45%. So what that tells us is that a higher percentage of people in Carlisle are choosing to subscribe to Comcast or to their cable operator than the in the average community in the United States. 77% of those people who subscribe take HD. That's, I mean, that's no big surprise. I just, I suspect anybody in the room. Of those who get HD, they say HD meaning high definition. Okay. 62% said they rarely have ever watched anything that's not in HD. 55% of the subscribers there in Carlisle said that they most often use the cable company's on-screen guide to help them know what programming is on and help them select what they're going to view. As we move through through here, in the customer service arena, now I'm jumping from sort of just a broader issues to customer service. We asked the people in the online survey a lot of questions about picture and sound quality, response from the cable company when you have problems, et cetera. So 47% of the people said they were satisfied with overall with Comcast. 38% said they were not satisfied. They were dissatisfied. 73% said they felt that the picture, the right reliability and the quality of the picture and sound was either very good or good. The areas on a customer service perspective that rated the most poorly would be rates charged. Surprise, surprise. Okay. And the ability to quickly speak to a customer service representative when you called. Quite a number of people, almost two-thirds, indicated they had tried to contact Comcast by phone in the past year. And a bit over three-quarters of them said they had to wait a minute or longer or were never connected to the customer service representative. So this is not, this is something, customer service that is something we can definitely impact during the license renewal process and in a new license. Then now we're going to look at some of the findings from the online survey that deal with the community programming or the public education and government access programming portion of the online survey. We asked people, everybody who responded, whether they, what kind of programming they were interested in. And and we gave them quite a long list of options, and they could check the ones that they they were interested in. And the ones that came out is the most highly ranked were folks were very interested. And what I'm talking about here is local programming. I'm not talking about stuff that comes from someplace else. I'm talking about community-based information. Carlisle News and Information ranked the highest, followed by government and public agency meetings, followed by an up-to-date community bulletin board, live coverage of local events that might be happening at the library or at the school or in the community, and informational programming about services and activities of Carlisle's groups, organizations, clubs, et cetera. During our discussion with community leaders, and this is the January 5th Select Board Meeting, here's some of the the input we got. Cable service isn't available in all areas of Carlisle. There's cables lying on the ground. There's poor customer service. We need to have these community channels in high definition and not standard definition like they are right now. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. Issues raised during the paying meetings, meetings of folks who are interested in that community programming or the public education and government access, the need to have equipment located in Carlisle, in addition to the fixed equipment in the select board meeting room, the need to have a person either full-time or part-time in Carlisle who can work with the schools, work with city departments and town departments and agencies, work with community groups to help create and get programming about Carlisle on these channels and not just other stuff. And again, the lack of Carlisle-centric programs in general on the on the access channels. Now, we looked at, as I mentioned, we looked at, so what's happening over at the high school? What are they doing? Okay. We're giving them money under an intermunicipal agreement every year. What kind of services are happening that are coming from via this intermunicipal agreement between Concord and Carlisle to provide, use these these resources that either are available now or some that might be available under a new license agreement? So we we looked at the, we looked at the equipment and we looked at the facilities over there. And one of the things that we found, and I'm going to point, I pointed this out earlier, is that Carlisle's license agreement and Concord's license agreement each specify three channels. So three plus three equals six. But there are three channels. It doesn't say in the license agreements, three shared channels. It says three for Carlisle and Carlisle's agreement, three for Concord. Now, I'm not saying you need six channels. What I'm saying is this is a franchise non-compliance issue or a license non-compliance issue that needs to be dealt with. We found that the equipment that is located in the select boardroom and the equipment that is located at the high school, okay, is high-definition equipment. However, Comcast doesn't deliver the programming on the cable system or when it goes out online. They're, they don't deliver it in HD. Comcast delivers the access channels in Carlisle in the lower-quality standard definition or SD quality. And you're going, well, why, if we're giving it to them in HD, why don't they deliver it in HD? Because the current license agreement doesn't require them to do that. Online survey respondents and and many, many people brought up a concern about this. And frankly, it's very interesting. This is something that we're finding happening in many places around the country. Now, all the access channels are high-definition. And arguably, there's issues that deal with ADA requirements, okay, that would make it improper or even potentially violating a American Disability Act rules if the content is not delivered in the highest quality possible. I'll talk to a little, talk with you a little bit about that in a moment. These are things I think I've pretty much covered already. I don't think I'm going to spend. I think the biggest thing is on this slide is there's no equipment located in in Carlisle. And if you want to use the studio at the high school, it's not open on the weekends and it's not open at night. And I I remember when I finally got a chance to come out and visit in August and drove from Carlisle to Concord, I realized driving that at night would not, in a snowstorm or even light rain, would not exactly be something I'd want to do. Okay. And so it creates a disadvantage to people in Carlisle when they have to drive over there if they want to pick up equipment to check out, to tape a soccer game or whatever, because there's nothing here located in Carlisle. And that is one of the things that came up. So I, in fact, you know, I really understand why some of the people responding to the survey and in the focus group in the manner that they were with regard to the the situation, that there's no, there's nothing in Carlisle. There's no easy way for people to be able to actually create or use equipment. Other, these are just in general other items. I think I pretty much brought this up. Some people, things that people suggested was that they would like to see equipment packages, updated packages to be available in the segment meeting room, automated robotic systems like the one you have, but a more up-to-date one at the Gleason Library in the Hollis Room, and also at the at the school campus, like maybe in the auditorium. Okay. And then also some, at least one portable setup for equipment and for editing. And editing would be like on a computer. Okay. They, this is things that people brought up. So what are the key findings? So we talked about key findings on customer service. We talked about broad key findings about the this company's overall performance. In this arena, the key findings basically are people want want higher-quality, community-based programming. They want some training classes. They want a staff person and some equipment located in the town, not having to drive over to Concord to get it. And now let's go and summarize here. So here are some of the key, the key recommendations that came out of the input. Now, I'm I'm clearly hitting the 30,000-foot overview and what I've given you so far. But here are the key things with regard to the cable, what we call plant, which is the wires, the wires on the poles or underground or the hub sites that head ends it feed that plant. That the Comcast system, the recommendation is that the system should include features typically found in state-of-the-art systems throughout the the 10-year term of a new, any new license agreement, and that there be updates regularly as needed. The Comcast should make service available to all areas of Carlisle. Now, I want to be specific here because this has come up. Your current license agreement has what we call a line extension policy that is very dated. It requires 30 homes per mile or 60 homes per mile in in the, in certain areas of the town, depending on whether it's underground or aerial utilities, utility poles or utility areas to hot hang their wire. It it more typically is 15 in modern franchise license agreements. So this is something that really needs to be updated and and would not be anything extraordinary to update because it's typically what's done anywhere. It's just you have a very old license agreement. And and would not be anything extraordinary to update because it's typically what's done anywhere. It's just you have a very old license agreement. Comcast should provide, again, cable plant and head end. They should provide spec- uh, sufficient ability and capacity to be able to make sure that your community channels, your patient channel, pay channels. Have the same signal quality as the highest quality signals, channels on the cable system. Um, with regard to cable plant and head end, other recommendations, there should be the ability to do live programming from a couple of other locations other than town hall. Perhaps the library and the school auditorium. To be able to have the capability of delivering programming that has closed captioning, okay? Um, including on low, uh, the local Carlisle programs and to make sure that any community programming that is done. Um, on these access channels is actually listed in the, in the program guide, just like, uh, on screen guide, just like all of the other channels. So again, this is a technical thing. It's a cable plant thing. In some cases, you're going to see things. Mentioned in different categories, but it's because they, 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 they touched cable plan and they may touch another arena. Let's look at subscriber service and customer service now. Um, even though we can't control it, Comcast should be strongly encouraged to offer less expensive programming pol- uh, packages. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this, this particular areas, we got the highest negative re- reaction to in response to, uh, from subscribers with regard to Comcast. The customer service standards that you currently have should be updated. Now, this has to do with. Uh, being able to get your phone answered quickly, the phone answered quickly if you have a problem. Being able to make sure that if you call in and there's a problem, that they give you an appointment on a specific day. That there's a, uh, uh, no more than a four hour appointment window. These, all these sorts of things you can have, you can, you have control over and can be in the customer service standards. And we would recommend that your current customer service standards be updated. Now, in the kind of community programming area, the recommendations are as follows. To maintain the current number of channels, which are three. To convert all right, not, not three shared with Concord, but three, okay, for Carlisle. Convert all those channels to high definition, so we're not seeing, uh, a poor quality of service. Have the ability to originate live programming from those couple of other locations that I mentioned. Um, not only from the access center, which is currently located under that inter municipal agreement with the town of Concord. At the high school, but also at town hall as it currently is and the library and the public school. And to provide adequate funding for resources, equipment resources and periodic replacement of that equipment. Like equipment in the select board meeting and eh, eh, whatever, over the life of the tenure license agreement. That the Comcast, what we call that franchise fees, that four point eight percent, okay? Can move, we moved up to five percent, which is what most towns and cities in the United States and Massachusetts are typically getting anyway. Um, and that all of the programming that ultimately is run on the community channels be included and listed. In the electronic on screen programming guide that where you can go to see other, everything else that's, uh, being, uh, cable cast. On the cable system. So the next steps really are to proceed with negotiations, um. Based on public input and finding and recommendations and hopefully negotiate a successful license agreement that will meet the community communications needs of the town. And its residents, um, through twenty thirty two. So with that, I'll stop and answer your questions and so forth.
This is very thorough, Sue. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. Let me get this off here.
All right, it's covered. Out the ground. So the, so who does the negotiation, Sue? Is that you?
Um, I'm, and Tim can answer that too, but I, I'm, I've worked, I've been working with Jenny, uh, with, with Ms. Merrill. Um, uh, to, um, update an agreement, okay, and with Tim. And, um, and then if, uh, I, I, Tim, you may want to, uh, chime in here or whatever, but it typically would be. Me sort of as the subject expert, your attorney and then other folk and like the, the town manager or and et cetera, but. That's really kind of up to you. But I, I think the key is that these negotiations get moving reasonably quickly. Um, so that our data doesn't get stale.
Yeah, um, just for your information, Tim is not actually at the select board meeting tonight because he had a family.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, he's not here, but you're saying, so, um, the negotiations need to begin. They haven't started yet.
Right.
What do you need from us as the select board to, um, move ahead?
What's my understanding from Tim that he wants to have an executive session of the select board at some time in the near future? So that we can get in up into a little bit more detail with regard to negotiating strategy that like, the last time he and I and and, uh, Ms. Merrill talked, that was where we left it. Um, so a- and then, and then we can launch from there.
Okay.
I thought Nathan was our representative for this negotiation.
Okay, so and Nathan Brown, I don't know if you've had any contact with him, but the select board member, he's not here tonight either, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, pardon me, I, I, uh, 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 Tim has, has mentioned, uh, Nathan, yes, I'm sorry.
So is that, so we have two more meetings coming up in December. Would you like to see one of those have an executive session in which we could discuss the strategy?
If, if, if that's possible, it shouldn't take long, but, uh, and, and, uh, but it's typically, and it was my understanding from, from Tim. That that's something that you all wanted to have happen. Um, and so that's why I, I spoke as I did.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so we can work on scheduling that. All right, any, any other questions from anyone here? Um, so Sue, we'll, um, we'll talk with Tim about the, when it makes sense to schedule an executive session and. Get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for all of this work. Um, there, there's a lot of information here, which is great and, and, um. It, it's interesting, you know, when we started this process way back when you first came to us, I think the general sense was, well, there's not a whole lot we can. You know, gain from this, um, the negotiations, but clearly there are some significant things that we can do. Get, get better service, that get better access, so that's great.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have, have a good rest of your evening and have a good turkey day.
Thanks a lot. Bye bye. Okay, um, so let's, uh, do the, uh, appointments that are listed here. Did somebody else like to move a few motions or shall we leave it up to Kate? All right, you go for it, Kate.
I move to accept the resignation of Scott Simpson from the Municipal Facilities Committee effective immediately.
Any discussion?
Does that mean you make a new appointment?
Yes, yeah. Um, you'll see the next one after, yeah. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Fix motion.
Move to appoint William Rissow Wolf Rock Road to serve on the Municipal Facilities Committee with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would, it's not on this sheet, but I'd like to add one more. Um, because we forgot to do it way back when, I move to, um, reappoint, um. Uh, Jerome Lerman to serve on the Municipal Facilities Committee with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye, that carries.
Right, and you wanted me to do this because this is a name that I can't pronounce.
Oh.
Um, move to appoint Ingo, I know Ingo.
Segvari.
Segvari, okay, you don't pronounce the Z. Uh, Fielding Farm Drive to serve on the Public Safety Facilities Task Force with an indefinite term.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where is Fielding Farm Drive?
I don't know, it's, yeah, anyway.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we're closing in on that.
All right, so, um, and they are, uh, the first meeting is scheduled for, um, this coming Monday morning. Which Nathan and I are going to attend just to, um, help get them started, uh, and then. They'll move on from there. All right, uh, let's go on then to the Town Administrator's Report. We've covered everything here. Um, so why don't we go to the, um, the liaison reports and you want to start with the ARPA? Session or the survivor benefits?
I don't care, uh, I have a, a, uh, we, we're going to do liaison reports. Um, I'll start with the ARPA because that was actually out, coming out of the Town Administrator's Report as well.
Okay.
Um, uh, tomorrow, the ARPA group is sending out an initial letter. To all departments, boards and committees explaining what the process will be and what the categories are under ARPA. Uh, you should have had a copy of that letter in your packet. Um, the ARPA committee will want to discuss, we would like to come December, next meeting. Uh, to discuss the areas of priority at our next meeting on December seventh, if that's possible. Um, and before then, we'd like the select board to review the list of categories and give some thought. As to what kinds of percentages of the whole we might want to allocate to each category. We'd like to know, do we want to spread the money thinly over a lot of categories, concentrating on just, um, addressing one? Um, do we keep a reserve for, and we, we were going to probably recommend. Um, that we keep some reserve because this is a three year. Um, thing and we don't know what's going to, you know, come up over the, the hill, uh, so, but we want your input, so that. Is that a ten percent holdback? Is it a five percent holdback, you know, um, of the, of the money? Um, do we want to fund only sustainable items, for instance, things that are like one and done? Or would we, you know, think about hiring somebody, say piloting a program that if we don't have the money later. Might have to be drawn later, but then possibly there's some temporary programs you want to do just for a little while and. So those are the kinds of questions that the committee can't answer. Uh, so the, the committee is looking for guidance from this board. Um, and then once you've got, have that sort of guidance. Then we'll get in all the applications and then we can kind of, you know, sort them into those categories that you guys. Kind of indicate and prioritize within those categories for you, but we don't want to make those decisions. Um, and I have some information about premium pay, in case anybody was thinking about that. Um, it's, premium ta- pay is intended for those essential workers. Who fall into a lower income pa- bracket in COVID facing positions and only as a sort of hazard pay. In other words, there's no question that frontline workers for police, fire, B P W, healthcare and schools would qualify. Um, telework is definitely not eligible, so we'd have to exclude any time working remotely from. A bonus for an otherwise eligible worker. And it's a very complex issue. Um, a lot of justification is required, going to be required if the premium pay would increase their total pay. Uh, to above a hundred and fifty percent of the state's average annual pay for occupations. Um, for all occupations, actually. Um, in this state, a hundred and fifty percent of the state's average annual pay for all occupations is a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars. So the, um, there's a lot of other rules, maximum premium pay is thirteen dollars an hour worked and twenty five thousand total per worker. The rules are not finalized yet, so if we make some decisions and they change the rules. We might, uh, pull the carpet out from under our feet and we'd end up, um, having to pay it out of our. Own pocket, so what I'm recommending is if you want to give any kind of premium pay to any. Employees, do it out of our, our budget and don't mess with it with ARPA because it's too, um, tricky. Um, so that's the ARPA. Did, did you say you have a question? Oh, okay.
So first of all, I have just a, in the eligible category thing. You mentioned severely serving disadvantaged communities, you see, none of that ours would do that, right?
Uh, no, we did have, we had people that were, you know, we were getting food from, food, um.
Not a community, that's a person.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
There's also something says. In those areas where recipients must identify the amount of total funds that are allocated to evidence based interventions. What does that mean?
I'm sorry, I'm mixed.
Which, which section are you in?
Yeah, which.
Well, it says.
Number one, public health?
Well, any of them, it's, it's, it's an overall thing, it just says evidence.
Oh, at the top, right, right, right.
Well, yes, in other words, we have to justify everything, so it's like the CARES Act, you know?
But not everything has the little asterisk on it.
Okay, so everything that was a little carrot behind it needs extra.
I get the carrot, it's the asterisk.
The asterisk is the one evidence based. So if you go down to prevention in congre- congregate settings, which you don't have here.
We don't have it.
But, uh, and let's go down here, mental health services, so.
Well, we do have that.
We do have that, so the evidence based interventions, I'm assuming that would be the, the documentation of visits or.
So more work, okay, okay. Um, now, you mentioned a few things, so you, you seem to indicate we should give you guidance. You, you should give the committee guidance on buckets, like what percentage go to what bucket across categories. But what about across departments or balancing between department and age to individual?
Okay, I think these categories, it would be easier if you, if you give us the guidance about the categories. When we get the grant applications or whatever you want to call those things.
Yeah.
We can then sort them into the appropriate, make sure they get put into the appropriate categories.
Not irrel- irrespective of which department might be making.
Irrespective of which department it brings this, right?
Okay, but then there is also later after your letter, so there's all that stuff that's in the letter and then there's more stuff about it. Allowable uses. It's kind of repeats itself in a different way, I think, right?
The, uh, two car, the, the letter you want to send to the Carlisle Town Department, is that what you're looking at?
Well, there's the list we just looked at and now there's a second list that's a little more readable after the letter. After the two, after the letter.
Oh, okay.
Now you get to another list, which is really like the first list except it's written different.
Yeah.
I'm not really clear, but one thing that does come out in this is again, the idea that maybe some could go to individuals, right?
Yes, it can, that, uh, we already have one, well, it's another individ- yes, we already have one app, grant application from the, uh, car. Cultural Center, who would then, um. Council, Council of, uh, and so there might be like say, an individual, you know, performer who, you know, is self-employed who. Applied to them because he couldn't perform during the.
Or somebody who just fell on hard time?
Or it could be, yes, um.
That person.
Somebody lost their job.
How would that work though?
Yeah.
Well, that's just the problem. That's one of the chartered ones, of course, and, uh. Um, you would have, I think that. You, if you said, well, we're going to put five percent towards this, you know?
Well, I don't even know about percent, I mean, you give us a percent, but I'm thinking, uh, let me ask a broader question. Solicit the community to come up with, the departments, I get, they're going to get a letter. The public works is going to say, great, we need a new system or something, right?
Right.
So they put a project in and you can put it in the bucket. But what about a family that lost income? You know, how do they know and can they just, or the reception?
They could, uh, we might or might not, you know, the thing is if there are in any, any other.
They're not going to get a letter from you.
In the service, something would run in the mosquito, right?
It'd be, it'd be in the mosquito. It could be that, that we send this letter to churches.
Okay, there you go, that's a good, that's actually, that's a very good.
Okay, and we also know the school are aware of needy families, right?
Okay, so you, and, so, but your letter doesn't really say, I mean, maybe you should say something outside, like. If you know, you mean, it's, it's written kind of very like our normal budget, very departmental.
Who wrote it?
Right, but I'm just suggesting.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree.
Cause I think that's a worthwhile thing and you're right, the churches and the school knows people who may need. One of the problems in Carlisle is with sort of a hidden, there's hidden poverty.
Absolutely.
You know, we're all like, we feel like we're doing great and then people who aren't, they, they, they don't say anything, you know, tease them, they're not homeless, fluffing around.
Right.
Begging at terms, it's not happening, so I think maybe we should think about that. Last, my last question is a paragraph. When we're in here, I'll, I'll just read it. ARPA funds can be used to cover eligible costs incurred during the period begins March. Twenty twenty one and December twenty twenty four, as long as the funds still, so you actually have five, almost five years, maybe four years now.
Right.
So back to your question about one offs, cause I mean, generally speaking, the finance committee has always been this way. Doesn't like to use, you know, grant money to fund things that have a tail of ongoing obligation, they like to have it in the budget. But this is potentially a four year. But this is potentially a four-year grant. Well, I mean, not to say you hired a social worker, as an example. Normally, they say, well, I don't want to do that, but actually you'd have four years.
Yeah, well, this is what I was asking about, the sustainable, do you want only sustainable?
Well, that's, well, that's why I'm saying, the philosophical argument generally or think on me, no, we don't want to fund sustainable things, we want to fund one-off things. But when you're given a four-year grant opportunity, I believe, it changes the perspective some. You could consider a four-year position that we later figure out if you need it.
Right, and the ARPA committee did not want to be in the position of saying, let's, let's spend, you know, let's get this four-year position and you, and everybody screams and says, you just committed us to, you know,
Well, things on May's scale, so I mean, we have to consider that.
Okay, then, so we're not doing that, you guys will do that if you want, if you don't want, we won't do it.
Anyway, those are, thank you.
All right, we're looking for cover. Yeah, so I just have a more, uh, sort of a higher level question, which is, you're looking to the select board to, to give you advice about how much to set aside for different categories? And I find that very difficult to do now without any sense of what, what are we likely to get in terms of requests? So I almost wonder if we shouldn't wait and to, you know, start the process. You're saying the first submission deadline is January 7th, so you're going to send this out tomorrow, you're saying? Right, and people are going to then put in requests? I, um, I'd like to see what we get. And is there, I mean, is there, you're not going to make any decisions prior to the deadline about recommending something to us to fund, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I wonder if we should look at what you get and see if that helps provide any guidance about.
Yeah, that's true, but I think we're looking for something higher level. I think we're looking for, for instance, like we were talking about tonight, or we wanted to start the conversation with you all about, well, you know, let's say one of the needs is a social worker or something. Do we want to consider it or say, absolutely, we, you know, kind of more general principles?
Yeah, that's a, maybe that's a,
Sustainable against non-sustainable.
Yeah.
Only things that we know, you know, don't need any documentation and they're no brainers and we already have them on our list that we were going to do anyway, and then, you know,
Yeah, yeah. So more of a broader framework rather than,
But, I mean, that, that actually leads to another question I meant to ask, which is, one, a large proj, project, again, I, I, I agree with Barney, I think you cast a net and you see what fish is coming. You might catch a really big fish, and you might say, boy, I hadn't thought about that, that's a really good thing to do. And that may take 20% of the budget instead of the 10% you thought was in the bucket. So I don't know the benefit of,
This doesn't have to be grieved and granted, we're just looking for,
You want, why not, what's wrong with, what's wrong with Barney's proposal? Cast a net, see what fish is, I'll come back and report about the fish, and then maybe, I mean, why pre?
Sort of a first, a first trial round, in a sense, right? I mean, not that,
Well, in fact, that's why we're doing a trial run, also, because we didn't want to do, have people feel like this was the only chance.
Right, right. Which I would just, by the way, I mean, it's what the comment I sent you earlier, but,
They changed it and,
Oh, good.
That should have been sent around.
Yeah, that's okay, but I would just say, yeah, to make it really clear and also it goes to the mosquito that you have, you know, this is planned over, you know, several years and so people shouldn't feel like,
This is only the first request, this is, this is only the first deadline.
The money is not going to be all, it's not going to get allocated, all the money is not going to get allocated in the first round, it'll be spread out and, yeah.
Yeah, we've already actually made that decision for you guys.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, okay.
But we wanted to check it out with you, that you agree with us.
You're going to get, you're going to get like three times as much money as you presently have, right? There's tranches of money, right?
Well, we've got 80, no, we're going to get another,
We're going to get a million too, we currently have 750.
Yeah.
But you could obligate the total amount of the,
You could obligate the whole million too. We are, we are only at this point even looking at the 750, we're not looking at the second half yet because it's not in our hands and we decided not to count our chickens before that.
Okay, so you're actually saying that, you said one thing, now you're saying the opposite, we don't want to obligate the amount of money we have in our, I just asked you that, we, can we obligate up to the 1.3?
You can, but I'm saying that this town, this committee does not want to do that.
One can, but we don't want to.
One can, but we don't want to.
I hear you, okay, very good, I'm okay, no further questions.
Luke, what, what would you like to know more about?
Nothing, I'll see when the smoke settles.
When the smoke settles.
Oh, okay.
So, um, let's put this on and we, I think we, uh, I've got actually a draft of the next agenda.
It's in the packet of it.
Yeah, well, it is, but it's changed so substantially, so.
The thing is, Scott's going to be here anyway because the, Timson will be here, so all we have to do is have John Tom and,
I'm going to pass this around shortly when we get to that, but anyway, that, um, we have the ARPA discussion of funding priorities on the draft agenda for the next meeting. But you had, you have another thing you want to go over, which is the,
I was approached by the finance department to clarify the policy around survivor benefits and their rate of payment. Currently, the, uh, the, our policy is silent on that issue. Specifically, well, you know, we pay 50% of retiree insurance. Actually, we, um, when we raised it to 55, 45 for the town employees, did we also raise it for the retirees?
Yes, we did.
We did, however, um, the rate is silent for survivors, the policy, yeah. So, um, the question is, do we want to pay 50% of, you know,
To a survivor.
To a survivor, um, or 100, do they, we want to charge them 100% of their, of the,
Of the cost.
Of the cost.
We pay zero.
That we would pay zero, but we make it available to them so that they don't lose their insurance.
Is that, that sounds the same as like Cobra in the private sector, is that like a Cobra?
It is not Cobra.
In the private sector,
Right.
When you lose your job, you get a period that you can pay the full boat.
That's right, that's, that, yeah, that's because you've lost your job, this is,
It's very defined, you can do it forever, in the public sector. I don't know what the rules are, or what comparable towns do, which is like,
Yeah, I, okay, yeah, well, the question, the thing is,
Well, we have a current survivor and we have to kind of make a decision about this. Yeah, um,
Aren't there other current?
No, we didn't, they have, all our, We have had them in the past, in the, but they, all our survivors have passed away. So we only have one survivor at the moment, um, and, um, we would need to know this information. What I said was, um, we'll, we'll make, we'll try to make a decision ASAP, um, and I think he's being charged 50% now.
Well, he was saying, I mean, the family is paying 45%.
Yes, yes, so it would be a little increase, but it'd be, it would get, you know,
It would be covered, yeah.
It would be covered, so we, we need to make that decision. I don't, I'm not asking you to make it this, tonight, uh, but I would ask you to think about it, let me know so that I can then let Anish, you know, and, and Snow, and then as soon as I know, first of all, we can take care of this one survivor, and then Anish and I will write a new, uh, um,
Well, I think you should write the new policy anyway, and the question is the amount, right?
That's why I'd like to know what's comparable towns.
Yeah, comparable towns, almost all towns pay 50%.
Yeah, so I think you should, you should draft the policy and send it, we'll send it out in the next packet.
I didn't want to draft the policy if everybody said, are you kidding me, I'm going to be too expensive.
They do that for the life of that survivor.
Yes.
Surviving spouse.
Surviving spouse.
Not surviving kids, but,
No, 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 surviving spouse. So I will work on that with,
Yeah, is that,
No, I was just thinking of the kid thing, right, I mean,
Kids, uh, under 18 maybe.
Well, you could maybe under 18.
Yeah, right, because I mean,
Yeah.
That'd be awful, right?
Yes, they would.
Yeah, so I mean, I,
Well, I guess,
But it's the plan that would be.
Well, well, that, that's basically what it is, it's like the existing plan, they couldn't go and change their, right?
It's a family plan.
Parents both die, I mean, you got all kinds of scenarios, maybe you could do a little more research on that, because I agree with that. I mean, there are other scenarios if you're writing policies. In this one, I think we have a simple answer, because the kids are older, right?
Yes, they are, they're both older, but,
But I could see what Luke's saying, if there's, I mean, maybe that is a surviving spouse and then she dies and this, or they both die, you know, I mean,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You should write the policy so enough that you can,
I, I, I will, but I, as I said, I, I wanted to see,
What the mood, what the sense of the board was.
What the mood was, yeah, yeah. Because I didn't want to go out and write it and then present it to you and you go, well, what the heck, Kate, you know? What's going to take you to the bathroom first?
No, you're covered, Kate, I'm covered, okay.
So, and I have one last thing really quickly, no, I have two last things. The Affordable Trust, uh, we received a scope of work and a contract from M A P C for the new H P P, Housing Protection Plan, and we've begun work, yay! And we have been done, begun a dialogue with NOAA to try, try to get our arms around various maintenance issues other than the stuff there.
Something I saw the picture of, breaking down.
Yes, they break, broke ground, yeah. We want to,
Yeah, yeah, that's all been done.
Uh, it's getting that, that's what I'm,
We want to create a mechanism for us to monitor and enforce the ground lease with them. So we, uh, we are, we are sending them a letter, uh, requiring them to, um, anything that, that wants them up, to let us know what's going on. Okay, um, and the municipal facilities, we've seen, we've had resignation of one member, but, um, with the appointment of the two others, we now have a full complement on the board. And I think, well, I'm going to ask, I think the, the M F C should probably consider asking for some alternate members because there's a lot of members who are not members who, you know, Bill Rissel, for instance, who just we appointed, he's a sit-in on all our meetings anyway, so, and Pete Hinton does the same, and I think we should have some mechanism for them to be able to be alternate so that we don't have a quorum or whatever, and that they can fill in because they have some extra expertise and can help out. And I think John Lavery would be another good candidate for an alternate in that. I think we just have to put that in the charter, just to put alternate members.
Right.
The, the committee is continuing to facilitate instructive conversation between the town and school around having an umbrella municipal department. And at our last meeting, we sort of threw it in the laps of Jim and Tim, to, um, go at it, you know? Bring us, tell us what you feel comfortable, you know, here's some of our ideas, this is what we think we're trying to accomplish, this is the, and these are the goal, and, you know, the goalposts, but you guys need to take the, you know, get the first down. Not to put the football thing too far, but, uh, um, so it's in their laps at this point. And, um, and I originally had one hundred other topic about this, we were, were having problems, well, we still have problems with the, with the, um, trailer. You know, you, you think the tra, a trailer solution, easy, easy, right? You, you call a trailer company, they, they plop it on, you hook it up. Well, first of all, um, the, we couldn't get National Grid to hook it up, it, there's a special hookup, you know, had to be, the DPW and by the,
DPW, yeah.
The power of the trailer?
Well, we got it now, so that was, I was, want to ask us to write another letter to whoever, to say, guys out here, to give us the service we need so we can use our trailer. Uh, so that, that was done, um, and we only have one more issue to resolve, um, and that's with the fire department. The trailers, uh, will have to be sprinkled and wired for sound so that they're monitored.
And is the water department, I think it's,
Well, that's, that's the problem, we're, we're working that out, but the thing was that originally, we were told that it was going to be an R, you know, residential, and then it said, well, no, it's a residential mix, and then, and then it, it just kind of unrolled, um, and the state got involved and, uh, then it, we got one bid, it was like 40,000, you know, it's like the trailer only cost 400, less than 200, you know, so, this is why we need,
The M part of the, I would,
Well, I know, but this is why we also need more staff, I mean, this is not a job for volunteers.
Yeah, yeah.
A building, you would have a big contractor do all that, right? We, we did it with, we're back, I think this is why Scott,
He resigned?
Well, he was the one that was in charge of this thing and he, you know, he's an architect, you would think he would know how to do some of this stuff. And he had just trouble after problem after football, so.
You have the professionals on staff who are part-time.
Part-time guy.
And then eventually he merged with the school of the,
Yes, and then, and then we would have then somebody who would do the procurement, right now, Tim is doing the procurement, and he, you know, he's,
Well, but we're going to rethink this.
Well, I understand, but this is part of the rethinking. The procurement, you, you like to have somebody who knows about the project and about construction to do the procurement.
Well, but there's a broader question in my opinion, which is, and this was late back when, I believe Madonna McInnes,
Yeah, yeah.
Was getting, because we were talking to Tim about the assistant, the APA, to get, I think she proposed back in the day, maybe it was him, I don't remember, like, a purchasing thing, that that might be one of the things.
Yeah.
Purchase, if somebody, that's part of their job is to get the place and then,
Yeah, exactly, and, um, I, above themselves, it's not fair to be asking Tim to do that, you know? You know, by,
All right, well, we should move along, sorry.
Thank you though for those liaison reports.
And we will, as you can, so I'm going to pass out the draft agenda for the, um, next meeting that we revised, Tim and I and Jen, just based on, um, what we already knew about, so, um,
Is that 7:15 you're doing both, or are you going to open a meeting with,
Well, that, that's just a typo now, it should have, should probably say 7:15 and then 7:20 to start the joint meeting, but this is, yeah, um, five minutes to, to maybe last, to figure out a town meeting date. And then the things that Kate was just talking about, so we've got the discussion of, uh, the ARPA committee sort of funding priorities and then the REITCOM, um, I believe, I don't know, Luke, do you have any thing to share about whether you've been able to confirm with Drew that the Recreation Commission will be ready to come present something?
Yeah, so I, I, I haven't heard anything back, but I'm assuming, uh, last time he and I communicated, it was, you know, he wanted it definitely before the end of the year. So I had thrown out the 7th, um, and I think he said that worked, and then I followed up once, he confirmed this, I haven't heard back, so I don't know if he's driving one or one of them.
Okay.
I mean, it's Drew, so hello, hello, it's done.
Okay, um, and so my understanding is it's going to be, it's the presentation, we're not going to take a vote that night.
Right.
Okay. All right, so that's how this is planned, and then, um, the survivors' health, uh, benefits that we just discussed, and then the rest of it is pretty straightforward. We are, we do have an executive session scheduled for the teacher's contract, does that make sense?
Give you certainly an update, I mean, we still, we're here, we just, you know, have three more meetings.
Yeah, so, um, do you,
One of which, uh, it, it, yeah, and I,
How much time do you need? For the executive session?
I don't think that much time, I was just,
So we could call up for 6:30?
Yeah.
All right.
I, I, I just want to say, I think, um, uh, Jack is being the outstanding, uh, leading the negotiation team.
Oh, good, that's good here.
On, back to ARPA, so will you guys be presenting something or is this a continuing, maybe just,
No, just to continue, we're, we're, find out the answer for you guys.
Will anybody else from ARPA be there, or?
Yes, um, for sure, Scott Triola will be there and I, I assume John will be there if he knows about the meeting.
Yeah, because it works well, because it'll follow the,
Yeah.
Finance committee meeting, so Scott will already be there for that. Um, all right, sounds good, and then, uh, we need to take a look at the minutes, and, um, you know, I haven't even got to them in my, so.
I have a question on, I guess the.
Minutes, or?
To be approved in person, I mean, the.
Will we make a motion first?
I moved to approve the minutes of the meeting.
November ninth.
You ever, you got that again? I'll second it, then.
Okay, so my question is for Jen. My question's for Jen, so, well, maybe it's your, Jenny question, but, so we, we have a minute, and I read in the minutes that we actually began deliberating and decided to dog with dangers.
Right.
We did.
And, you know, other people show up at eight thirty and, and we're like, get up at five and blah, 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 and then we have a motion, then we have a motion to continue the hearing. Does all the, so does that all go away, how does that work, that, well, because obviously we.
I mean, those prior, those votes, yeah.
Well, it doesn't go away, I mean, that's what we did.
No, but we never undid it, that was my point.
Uh, well, we, did we vote?
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, we did vote.
We did vote, to declare him a dangerous dog, and we were discussing the remedies when they showed up.
And then we continue the hearing, so is that automatically undone?
I think, in fact, when we closed the, the, the meeting, when, when we continued the hearing, we rescinded our vote, we said, okay, this, this vote is no.
Okay, but does that mean, is that obvious?
No, maybe we need to be added in here?
I would add that.
Okay.
But we didn't.
Is that true in a legal setting, yeah?
Yeah, but, because we didn't actually take a vote to rescind our decision.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
No, but I do think that we, when we said.
It implied in, uh, reopening the hearing.
You were gonna allow me to. Because we were going a lot through the testimonies.
So it's obvious, I guess, but it's.
But maybe, that's a good point, David, yeah, we should check that out with Jenny.
All right, and that's it, that's all.
All right, any other comment on the, uh, minutes? All right, well, then, hearing done, uh, we've got a motion on the floor, it's been, uh, seconded, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Aye?
With the, let me.
With the, um, with.
Understanding I go make some amendments, amendment, yes, aye.
With clarification from legal counsel. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, and, um, just information about the warrants that I signed.
I have a question about the warrant.
Okay, David, don't let me down here.
Well, we're gonna get you down by then. So, we got a warrant signed by Barbara T. Arnold in the amount of nine million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven eighty-seven, twenty-six and one.
Yeah, that was a big one, yeah.
Could Barbara T. Arnold please explain us?
Yeah, that one, oops, hold on, I'm gonna get there. I don't know, did yours come in upside down?
Good view, good review, I'm looking.
I did, I did, I did, I did.
Well, anyway, you don't, you know, you're saying the one with the nine million one.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, um, I think it was the pension. Well, uh, I'm pretty sure this was, um, usually it's. Because I did ask, um, Kelly about this, she, I mean, she specifically, um, was this for the, the, uh, pensions?
Did you pay a debt or something, or?
No, I, or was this for the, um, you know, I, I can't remember, David, sorry. Um, but tell you what, I'll send a, I'll send a note out, I, I've gotta come in tomorrow to sign warrants with Kelly, I'll just ask her, send a note. Yeah, it was fine, whatever it was, but, yeah, it's out of my head.
Yes, it's paid to each of the person's name below, normally there's a little, you know.
No, well, that's what Frizzle used to write in, but Kelly's not doing that, so maybe I should ask her.
Ask her too.
Yeah, I, I probably.
I mean, I do know it's town expense, it's somewhere in.
Yeah, I should ask her to do the same thing that Frizzle used to do, yeah, you're right, that'd be helpful. Um, okay, I'll follow up on that. All right, I think, uh, look at that, it's nine fifty-seven, and we're gonna adjourn a few minutes early unless some last.
The annual tree lighting?
Oh, yeah, the annual tree lighting, just to note that it's being held on, um, the night of our next select board meeting.
I just don't know the tradition, Tim would know it.
Yeah, um, so, just to let you know that the ferns, Matt Hurwicke is hosting that again, and the fire department is, uh, bringing Santa down from the North Pole. And it's gonna be outdoors, um, and, uh.
What time would it be?
I believe it's at six.
I would say, did you say that?
It's the night of our next select board meeting, it's the seventh, December seventh, yeah. Um.
Doing their sneakers on for six thirty, Zach.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll start over there and then we'll run back over here by six thirty, the executive session. Okay, so may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
May.
I'll move.
And the second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much.
I'm ending, I'm ending the, uh, resume, all right, that's me to do, right?
Yes.
Correct, and stop the recording, yeah.
Good night, Jeannie.
Good night, all.
I don't know if anybody's there.
Christina, well, Jeannie and Christina and, uh, Mary Lynn, we're here.
Okay, good night, all.
Good night, all.